Good evening. The March 10th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns? He's not here. Councilmember Sefferton?
Here.
Councilmember Revel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed is here. Councilmember Herakaris?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris? We did not hear you. Councilmember Harris is online. Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Nusma?
Here.
And Mayor Biss?
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is approval of virtual council member participation. My understanding is that council members Kelly and Harris are traveling for work reasons relative to their council work. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Councilmember Reed moves approval of council member Kelly and Harris's virtual participation due to their work commitments. Councilmember Nusma, I believe, seconds. Would the Clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Sefferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. The virtual participation is approved and council members Kelly and Harris will be participating in the rest of the roll calls for the evening. The next item on the agenda is my announcements and proclamations, of which there is one, proclaiming March 20th Nooruz Day. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Nooruz, observed for more than 3,000 years on the vernal equinox, is celebrated by many around the world, marking a new year and the beginning of spring, literally translating to "a new day." And whereas many in the Evanston community who have Persian or Afghan heritage spend Nooruz with their families, sharing food and marking the beginning of a new year. And whereas Nooruz is an ancient and beautiful tradition that is one of many celebrated in Evanston that makes our community so much the richer. And whereas Nooruz Mabarak, meaning "happy Nooruz," to all Evanstonians who mark this tradition, and hope that this new year brings nothing but joy, time with family, delicious food, and most of all, a deep sense of knowing that you are not only welcome but very much belong and wanted in the Evanston community. And whereas Nooruz celebrates the renewal of nature, bringing family and friends together to take part in unique traditions welcoming the arrival of spring, central to the celebration is setting the Haftzin table with an arrangement of seven symbolic items that start with the letter S. Sumag, sumac berries. Senjed, dried lotus tree fruit. Serke, vinegar. Seb, apples. Samanou, sweet pudding. Sabze, sprouts. And seer, garlic. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Evanston, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March 20th, 2025, as Nooruz Day and join our friends and neighbors in the Iranian and Afghan communities of diverse backgrounds celebrating Nooruz today. And we carry forward its message of living in harmony with nature and with each other. And I would just say, on a personal note, I think we're living in a time when the question of whether people of all, national origins and religious faiths and cultural traditions are welcome in this country and in this community. And so I think it's particularly important to send this message of not only, as the proclamation says, not only welcome, but the fact that we really desire the presence of those from all around the world. And here to accept the proclamation, we have a family who enjoy their annual Nooruz celebrations. And so Anton Anyasi and Ilya Tu, if he wants to, would come forward and accept the proclamation, please. This concludes my public announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Clerk Mendoza. While we're bringing up the presentation, just wanted to share our congratulations to the ETS Boys Basketball Team, who had a huge win last Friday night over Laola Academy. And they play in little over an hour tonight in Hoffman Estates against Lombard West for a chance to make it to state. So we wish the team well and good luck tonight. So with that, we'll go ahead and shift to our presentation on federal funding. So just, I think it was two days after the election, staff immediately began putting together some updates and documenting what we were, some of the communications we were hearing from our federal partners and updates we were seeing in the news in the immediate aftermath of the election. We've been working with our various partners, tracking different updates and statuses from IML to National League of Cities, Northwest Municipal Conference, a number of others, including Cook County Board President's Office and USDA and among others. It's been a difficult environment to assess. There's been fast-moving developments and legal challenges. One update is often changed a couple of days later with another update. It's been a very fluid environment. We've had a variety of executive orders issued and legal challenges underway. There's been different legal activities and actions as it relates to sanctuary cities. And then on January 27th, there was a freeze of all federal grant funding, which was then rescinded about 48 hours later, actually. That was the OMA ruling. Some federal funding streams, such as the Water Infrastructure Finance, WIPO, were frozen, then released. Other programs have brought bipartisan support and are more immune. Federal funding related to equity and sustainability in particular face higher risk. There are a number of agencies that are continuing to review their grant programs. Some partners have urged us caution or even pausing activities for the time being. Staff turnover at federal agencies has also been challenging, as well as unclear internal directives. Some of our federal funding streams that are at lower risk, at least from our assessment as of today, include IEPA, our ARPA fund balance, Surface Transportation Program, our GEMT funding, the fire department worked on several years ago to secure the US DOT Innovation Grant, which is our Putting Assets to Work Grant, a number of public health grants, a DOE earmark for rooftop residential solar, and some CDBG and home entitlement funds. Those are what we assess as of today with what we know and perfect information as lower-risk funds. And then some of our higher-risk funding streams include the DOE Inflation Reduction Act Grant of 10.4 million, the Pro Housing Grant, certain HUD funds, the Urban and Community Forestry Grant that we received. Again, other public health grants are more at risk, and even things like FEMA grants, which have been temporarily paused at this point. So some of our next steps include we'll continue to bring updates to the Finance and Budget Committee, as well as City Council. We'll continue to track updates and log our communications with federal officials to assist in ongoing and future lawsuits. And of course, continue our partnership and collaboration with other entities for continued funding. We have a number of staff here that are the subject matter experts on individual funds. We're happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Would the Clerk please add Councilmember Burns to the role? Councilmember Burns?
I think there was one on here for 10.4. I'm just trying to see the grant connected to the HBO ordinance. Is that on here? Is that the 10.4? Is that something else? Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed? I just want to say thank you to staff for being on top of this immediately and recognizing this is an issue. Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo that. I appreciate that the information is spotty, but we need to really be ready for everything and understand what we might be preparing for. So thank you, and I would just ask us to keep on it.
That's good. That concludes my remarks.
And my hand raised.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. I just want to mention here at National League of Cities, there's, many cities are passing emergency resolutions to declare in support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds. So I will share that. I would hope everybody, we could do the same thing. I'll share they have a draft resolution that they're asking all cities to get on board with to send to the federal government.
Thank you, Councilmember.
In support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the city manager's public announcements. The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Yes, I want to acknowledge there was a few Schrimerhorn management company sent email communication about their concerns of HBO and then CAA as well, and Bill Weldon. There were a few others in support of the HBO. Additionally, just as a reminder, early voting starts March 17th and goes through the 31st. And early voting will be here in the Civic Center in G300. And we urge everyone to look up their voter registration to see the wards that they reside in as a reminder of redistricting and on April 1st as well. But the polling places for some people, although redistricting happened a while back, should remain the same except for one polling place in the 5th Ward, that the Hill Arboretum Apartments, which that polling place is now closed, and that polling place will go to Fleetwood, Jordan. So all of those people will be voting in the gym. But other than that, there's no other changes. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have a pretty robust group of signups, so everyone today will be given one minute. One little wrinkle, as folks know, I think a number of people signed up for, to speak to item P2, which died in committee. So I'm going to err on the side of inclusion and so call on folks unless you told me already that you didn't want to be called on. But we may, we may have some people who have already left because of the resolution of that item. The first person, we begin as always with this orange-yellow, I don't know, in-between orange? Goldenrod, thank you. Because we were, it was almost going to be the end of the meeting. Piece of paper, beginning with Paula Shoal, who will be followed by Marty Klebs, and then Pamela Powell Rosenbusch.
Paula Shoal, 9th Ward. In the days leading up to tonight's HBO vote, there's been a lot of comment that doesn't seem to take into account what's in tonight's amended ordinance. The HBO is not a hard and fast mandate. It includes 25-year goals, but it leaves it up to the experts to determine whether and how these goals can be reached. An ordinance would give authority, accountability, goals, and a process to the rulemaking. Fifty percent of the technical committee members are now required to be nominated by building owner associations, ensuring their equal participation. The amendments explicitly allow net zero offsets and credits to be considered for alternative compliance. The ordinance is not enforceable until City Council approves the final rules, and rulemaking bodies must now consider and report on affordability impacts to both residential and commercial buildings. Cities like New York did most of their rulemaking after initial passage, and rulemaking done before passage in cities like New York and elsewhere had to be redone later. Concerns about lender uncertainty and property sale values have not been produced elsewhere, but if they do exist, they would persist regardless of whether an ordinance is passed now or later unless lenders and buyers can be convinced that without a delay in passage, it will never happen or be so watered down that it won't matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marty Klebs, who will be followed by Pamela Powell Rosenbusch, and then Eric Passit.
Hi, my name is Marty Klebs. I live in the 4th Ward, and today I'm here to represent Third Act Illinois, which supports the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. Third Act is an organization of those over 60 years old that organizes around climate change and democracy. Many important questions have been raised by council members and the public and addressed through amendments so that we can, so that we can have a very good proposed ordinance. That's what public comments and council discussion are for. But I'm here because I want to address the issue of the timing of the rulemaking. I'm experienced in regulations. I worked as a manager at US EPA for 25 years and at the agency as a whole for over 33. It's very common in the, it's the practice in the federal government that legislation be passed first and regulations follow. I think this practice is acceptable for our situation here, especially because of the amendments in the ordinance will mean that the rules are not enforceable until the council approves the rules. I also, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Pamela Powell Rosenbusch, who will be followed by Eric Passit, and then Doug McDonald. And if Pamela is not here, we'll move ahead with Eric Passit, who will be followed by Doug McDonald, and then Peter O'Brien.
Hi, my name is Eric Passit. I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I'm also a citizen of the 4th Ward. And I'm still, you know, I've read the amendment to this ordinance for Healthy Building Ordinance, and I'm still, you know, you can say there's still, we can, you know, there's a lot of rules that can be done along the way. What if the next council isn't as reasonable as you guys? How do we know that? So for the next 15 years, we're sitting there wondering, you know, what's going to happen? You think we're going to wait around for that? You're crazy. You know, so our, you know, I've been talking to a broker and some of my other people that in the business, and when it comes to buying a building in Evanston, they're going elsewhere. And that's, to me, that's a fact because I know what we're doing. We're not looking at going, investing any more buildings in Evanston. Because with stuff like this and the other unreasonable laws that have tried to be passed, what's the point? And the other fact I'll make very quickly is it's going to affect tenants. The rents are going to be raised because we're not going to wait 10 years to do this work. We're going to start quicker. So.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Doug McDonald, who will be followed by Peter O'Brien, and then Bill Schrimerhorn.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor. Greetings, City Council. I am here to support the lease with Celadon, and this concerns Agenda Number 13 in your list. I am with Jensen Gardens in Evanston, and we are primarily a landscaping design company or group, and also actual gardeners. We are very supportive of the Celadon plan, and we hope they will be able to sign the lease with the city. We are supportive of the city access and would like to work with the city and the community to make Jensen's legacy a lasting one in Evanston as it is already in Chicago. Thank you very much.
Well timed. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Peter O'Brien, who will be followed by Bill Schrimerhorn, and then Charles Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Peter O'Brien. Excuse me. I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward, and I'm a commercial property owner in Evanston. I'm speaking today in opposition to the proposed Healthy Building Ordinance. While I agree with the goals of this ordinance, I do not believe that you have a good partner to achieve these goals. We recently renovated a vintage apartment building in South Evanston. During the renovation, we elected to go with both upgraded gas and electric appliances. While Nikor completed its work within a couple of weeks after request, we have been waiting seven months for ComEd to complete a simple power upgrade that is still yet to be done. This ordinance will give ComEd an extremely valuable, complete energy distribution monopoly in Evanston, and as far as I can tell, the city has not received any firm concessions, commitments, or assurance from ComEd that it will be a responsible partner in this ordinance. Keep in mind, this is a company whose senior executives were recently convicted of bribery and conspiracy. It reported recently over $1 billion in profit last year. This council should assume that ComEd will take full advantage of the leverage you are giving it, and it will be to the detriment of owners and tenants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bill Schrimerhorn, who will be followed by Charles Smith, and then Bella Filstrup.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the HBO. One of the things that I've been concerned about is lenders, and they've told me that they're scared to death of this because there's no certainty. We've also got renewals. When you're up for a renewal, they're going to say, "Thank you for the last five years of your loan payments, but we are not going to renew your loan. You're going to have to go elsewhere." They're scared to death of this. And I didn't think about this, and we had a loan servicer get ahold of this and called me and said that he is very concerned that if this passes, you're going to be in violation of the loan, and they're going to call the loan in. They're saying that it's a burden on the building, and it's like a capital improvement, and they don't agree with it because they want to stick with the normal way that things are done in the U.S., where we have gas and we have electric and we're diversified. So you're putting a huge burden on it, and you're scaring the heck out of these, you're scaring the heck out of us because we have no certainty. You guys want certainty to know what's going on with these grants. We want to know about certainty about this, and I'm telling you, this is going to be a problem for Evanston, and it's going to be on all of you guys that we're trying to do something that's not achievable.
Thank you very much.
You've got to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Charles Smith, who will be followed by Bella Filstrup, and then Carla Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, members of City Council. My name is Charles Smith. I live in the 8th Ward. I've lived in Evanston for over 40 years. I am a member, chairman of Jensen Gardens Incorporated. I am confident that Celadon and Jensen Gardens will work together and follow through on Celadon's exciting plan. I have unconditional faith in the Celadon plan and the unique opportunity that it has created for the historic Jensen Gardens and grounds. Our broader vision and commitments are very important. Celadon's investment to support of support will benefit the community as a whole in the form of a robust infrastructure and training ground for people in Evanston from all backgrounds and ages to participate in natural habitat stewardship and enjoy, and the joys of serving nature. So I ask, please approve the Celadon lease tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bella Filstrup, who will be followed by Carla Sutton, and then Sharon Fagan.
Good evening, Council. My name is Bella Filstrup, and I'm a junior at Northwestern University studying environmental science and policy and a part of Run on Climate. I'm here today to thank you all for your work on the Healthy Buildings Ordinance and express my strong support for its passage. I want to thank Councilmember Burns for all his work with the community and his amendments, which take the concerns of key stakeholders in building owners into account, which are in the meeting pages 272 to 282. Many of you have mentioned your concern with the order of this ordinance, but conducting detailed rulemaking after passage is strongly recommended by experts in peer cities who have adopted building performance standards like the HBO. This gives people more time to make public comments and be more involved. Also, the rulemaking process will take place during the next city council, who ultimately will decide the rules for the ordinance, making this process even more democratic. Thank you so much for your time, and please prioritize our future here at the local level when so much in our country feels like it's falling apart.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Carla Sutton, who will be followed by Sharon Fagan, and then Julia Pantogga.
Carla Sutton, 5th Ward. I stand in opposition this evening to SB 1 Resolution 21R-25 and A12 Ordinance 01-0025 for the following reasons. One, when we think about relocation of the building in Evanston, I read the memorandum, and it looked like someone who wrote it was bipolar. One minute you're talking about getting rid of the building, next minute you're talking about upgrading it, then you say upgrading it for non-municipal purposes. It would be a lot clearer to me as a voter if you had clarified the intent of the use of this building for the future. Secondly, ordinance 01, the home building, Healthy Building Ordinance, I'm against gas bills, but as a small landlord, there's no way in the world I could refinance and get three complete buildings turned completely to electric. I would have to raise the rent. This has a danger of ending affordable housing in Evanston, and thank you for Harley Clark, and thank you for the vote for the committee.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sharon Fagan, who will be followed by Julia Pantogga, and then Jeff Smith.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sharon Fagan, and I've been a resident of Evanston for the past 38 years and a part of the 7th Ward. And I'm here, I'm also a board member of the Jensen Gardens, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Celadon contract with the city of Evanston to restore Harley Clark Mansion and the lease and funding that will also support the Jensen Gardens. As you know, Harley Clark has been vacant for 10 years, and it's time to turn that around, and it's been impossible to really enjoy and make the best of the site while the Harley Clark Mansion is deteriorating. And I truly believe that this contract represents the best opportunity we have to restore the mansion, create a beautiful garden, provide unique and special public space, create uses that Evanstonians can enjoy, provide educational programs that will facilitate better environmental stewardship throughout the city of Evanston.
Thank you very much.
So please, vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Julia Pantogga, who will be followed by Jeff Smith, and then Mary Rozinski.
Hello, I'm, hello, Mayor Biss, and City Manager Stowe, and County Clerk, I mean, City Clerk Stephanie Mendoza, and all the council members. I am here, I am Julia Pantogga, resident of the 5th Ward and a member of the Commission on Aging and Disability. Although I do not speak for them tonight, I'm speaking for myself individually. I'm here to ask you to approve the Resolution 21R-25, authorizing the city manager to direct staff to move forward, blah, blah, blah. I won't read the whole thing. Right on the front of your agenda, it says, "The city of Evanston is committed to making all public meetings accessible to persons with disabilities." This building, although lovely, is very hard to get to, especially if you are disabled or you do not own a car, which is a large proportion of Evanstonians. It does not make those populations feel particularly welcome at city council meetings or other meetings held in this building. This, I commend this city for all you have done, establishing a commission and hiring a manager for these concerns, and I hope that you will continue to do that and locate the Civic Center downtown.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Smith, who will be followed by Mary Rozinski, and then Olin Wilson Thomas.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the citizens who worked for years to try and save the Civic Center and to keep Harley Clark public, not just the grassroots organizing, but the analytics done, and both of those were among the best I've seen. I'd like to call out former alderman Emily Guthrie and possible future council member John Kennedy, as well as Dan Garrison, the Brugliaries, Brian Becheris, and the former mayor Lidle and the late Roy Morton on that. And the Harley Clark Lake House Gardens Group surpassed even that effort. It was a stellar assemblage, and the RFP was among the best we've ever seen. Both Harley Clark and the Civic Center are linked in that the will of the people was ignored as badly as the physical building was neglected. I know enough not to tilt it. Windmills, I see what's coming down the pike here, but the public use that we were promised for rejuvenated Harley Clark under private management, it's lacking in the current lease. The dunes should also not be privatized, but please make the public space on the first floor specific and an enforceable covenant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rozinski, who will be followed by- The next speaker is Mary Rosinsky, who will be followed by Olin Wilson Thomas, and then Len Lampkin.
Thank you. I'm here to speak on SP 1 about selling the, or getting out of the Civic Center. We were promised a full, robust discussion and public meetings about the options, and I know I sent you all an email today, and this negativity about adaptive reuse, what could happen here, is a little baffling, I think, for a city as wonderful as Evanston. This could be a destination place. We can make it ADA accessible. We could even have a bus that stops off here more. But as you saw the old post office, if you read the email and saw the link, they're playing, you don't keep the walls. You bring this up to the standard, and you lease out the space that you don't need, or you let the police and fire come in. But I really resent the rushing to just, "We're going to make a decision," and Jonathan, I am addressing this to you, this council member, because you made a motion to just, "We're going to never come back," and you promised, you promised the people that we would have a real discussion, and so I'm asking you to consider that. The other thing is, I do want you to reconsider the Healthy Business Building Ordinance so that we don't harm unintentionally our condo owners and other big owners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Olin Wilson Thomas, who will be followed by Len Lampkin, and then Meg Welch.
Good evening. My name is Olin. I'm a Ninth Ward resident. Since the HBO has introduced, there have been significant improvements, which have been designed, reviewed, and explained by many experts in their respective fields. And by delaying the HBO any further, we won't be doing building owners or renters any favors. We'll simply be kicking the can down the road, leaving building owners with less time to comply, less time to seek advice from the boards and committees that will be formed upon the HBO's passing. Addressing climate change is often thankless work with few tangible impacts. It's not like we'll be able to step outside and feel the temperatures drop after we pass this, but that does not mean that we should delay action. We can't solve climate change, but we can do our part to help. We must do our part to help. For far too long, Evanston has contributed a disproportionate amount to the climate crisis, with poor communities around the world bearing the consequences of our inaction. Given this opportunity we have to merely begin to rectify our actions, we can't pass it up. Places like New York, Boston, and Seattle have already passed similar ordinances, so it's not like we're the first ones to do this. It's time we put our money where our mouth is and take the steps that we know are necessary to combat climate change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Len Lampkin, who will be followed by Meg Welch, and then Libby Hill.
Good evening to the mayor, city manager, and city council. I would usually be speaking in favor of an environmental ordinance, but tonight I'm opposed to H. The reason I'm opposed, as the president of a condo at 835 Ridge Avenue, this would cost my condo association over a million dollars to retrofit the building, 35 units. There's no money in our condo association to do that, and I understand the amendments, I appreciate the amendments, that would, somewhere down the line, we could push things there, we'll make it more affordable, but I know this, the DOE money, that's going away. Trump has already said it's going away, and there's going to be lawsuits. We're not going to see that for years. And I'll say this to you, my son lives in New York City. His rent has gone up 500%. The rents in New York City are going through the roof since the passage of what they've done there, because there was no protection for tenants, there's no protection in this for old condo and old co-op buildings. And I'll lastly say this, one bomb dropped on Ukraine does more to harm the climate than everything we're doing in Evanston to support the climate change.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Meg Welch, who will be followed by Libby Hill, and then Hugo Rodriguez.
Hello, Meg Welch, Fourth Ward. I support having a plan for Harley Clark Mansion approved, but that's why it's essential to get the approval process correct. A few weeks ago, I discovered that part of the plan voted upon was redacted. Multiple entire pages, not in the financial section, were redacted. Under the Mope and Meeting Act, which is the law, citizens have the right to know the actions and the reasoning of public body decisions. Since the purpose of a public body is to assist the people, the statute fosters open meetings and is construed against closed meetings. The city replied to my FOIA request that they would not unredact because it was names, addresses, credit cards, and social security numbers, which is not information that must be disclosed. That seemed implausible because entire pages were blacked out. Lovey, a local, successful, quite successful FOIA firm, agreed with me and filed a complaint against the city late Friday. I urge you to consider if voting on any issue rated to the redacted material is responsible tonight. If the city is compelled to unredact the material, and if it is found relevant to the reasoning-
Thank you very much.
...for approving any resolution tonight, then you will be in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Libby Hill, who will be followed by Hugo Rodriguez, and then Ellie Elaine Feddersen.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mayor Biss. My name's Libby Hill. I'm a resident of the Sixth Ward, and I'm a board member of Jen's Jensen Gardens Evanston. And I'm speaking tonight to just request the council to press ahead and to, with a contract with Celadon, for the rehabilitation of the Harley Clark Mansion, the coach house, and the greenhouse. As an advocate and volunteer in natural areas and open spaces in Evanston, which I've been for years, I can say that the gardens of Jen's Jensen will add one more beauty spot for Evanston, one more place for people from outside the city to come and enjoy and spend money here and support businesses, and it will provide another area for natural areas, education, and steward recruitment, which we actually need. The greenhouse will provide opportunities for sowing seeds for other Evanston natural area projects. The financial and moral support of Celadon will enable that restoration to proceed into full bloom. Please vote finally to approve the lease tonight.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Hugo Rodriguez, who will be followed by Ellie Elaine Feddersen, and then Len Shara.
Good evening. My name is Hugo Rodriguez, and I'm a proud citizen of Evanston, Eighth Ward. A couple of comments. There has been a sense of rush on proposed resolutions, so many issues that are, in proposed resolutions to so many issues that our city is facing at this time. Civic Center, absonning of the entire city, Healthy Building Ordinance, Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, Landlord Tenant Ordinance, and that is just to name some of those issues. They are very real issues, for sure, and deserve our attention and time. Having volunteered as a committee member for the housing and community development for six years, I can tell you that we make so many decisions hoping that things will work out, when we have no defined plans and how those plans would work or should work. You're supposed to vote today on the HBO, where we are supposed to convert to electrical services by 2045, all of our buildings. Do we have a way for the service providers to avoid all blackouts? I have never experienced a gas blackout, but yes, I have many electric blackouts. And when all will be electric, it could and most likely will cause more than just trouble. It could cost lives when we don't get electricity.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to use some of the time of the people that didn't come up to the podium.
No, I'm sorry, everyone gets the same amount of time. Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ellie Elaine Feddersen, who will be followed by Len Shara.
I spoke to you last month about this issue of the fire pit at Lighthouse Beach next to the Harley Clark Mansion. I'm only asking you to modify one word in one sentence, and it will make a difference. The lease states that neither party shall reserve more than 25% of the yearly reservations. A clause has been added about weekend reservations, but it's not clear what a weekend is, and it's not sufficient. It does not define weekend. It does not protect equitable access. I urge you to please change the wording of the one sentence, "Neither party shall reserve more than 25% of the yearly." Please change it to monthly, and this will assure equitable access to desirable weekends. I've done the math. Trust me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Len Shara.
Hello, Len Shara, Sixth Ward. I'm here to speak in favor of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. Thank you, council members, mayor, city manager, for all the consensus building you guys have done in the background over the last couple of weeks since we brought this forward, maybe six weeks ago. In this time of chaos and uncertainty, and frankly incompetence on the federal level regarding forward-looking policy, Evanston can and should take this small, measured, thoughtful step towards a more detailed rulemaking to begin to realize a cleaner and healthier future. We know it will not be easy, but we know it will be less easy if we wait. I think the whole point of the rulemaking is to get rid of the uncertainty and have a plan forward. So it's not, people say it's uncertain, it's flexible. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This concludes the list of people who signed up, this concludes the list, this concludes the list of people who signed up, you're going to love the end of the sentence, just to let me get there. This concludes the list of people who signed up on the piece of paper to speak and public comment. We now move to those who signed up online to speak in person and public comment, who will be followed by those speaking online. So we begin with Malika Gardner, who will be followed by Dan Skirmerhorn, and then Bruce Ennenbach. And I don't believe Ms. Gardner is here, so in that case, we will move on with, with, oh, sorry, I actually skipped someone, so we'll, we'll go ahead, first with William Brown, who will be followed by Dan Skirmerhorn, and then Bruce Ennenbach.
Good evening. My name is Bill Brown from the Eighth Ward. I'm the vice president of Jen's Jensen Gardens in Evanston, and I speak to you tonight in full support of the Celadon lease for the Harley Clark property. JJGE is wholeheartedly prepared to partner with Celadon in the renovation of the coach house and the Jen's Jensen-designed landscape of the property. The partnership with Celadon provides a transformational opportunity for JJGE to accomplish its initial work of renovations. Our aspirational goal is to then care for the renewed landscape, as well as offering a variety of programs from the coach house and the grounds. Lastly, I would encourage our friends at Evanston Community Lake House and Garden to support this lease, understanding all that it can do to make the Harley Clark buildings and grounds a treasure for the City of Evanston. Please vote yes for this lease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Skirmerhorn, who will be followed by Bruce Ennenbach, and then Louis Silverstein.
Good evening. My name is Dan Skirmerhorn, and I'm here to speak on the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. First of all, I'd like to thank especially Councilmember Burns and the City Council members for taking the time to go through this thoroughly and to recognize the value of the stakeholders and putting them on the technical committee. That is certainly a step in the right direction and gives us some hope that there will be some reasonableness to this ordinance, but it still leaves us with the concerns of affordability of housing and the affordability of condominium associations, units where they probably at this point don't even realize what they're up against. I think we have a lot of uncertain issues that are still left to be decided, and I think it is somewhat backwards to pass this ordinance before those are worked out. But again, I thank the council for taking the time to include the stakeholders and give us a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Bruce Ennenbach, who will be followed by Louis Silverstein, and then Cynthia Beebe. If Mr. Ennenbach is no longer here, we'll move ahead with Louis Silverstein, who will be followed by Cynthia Beebe, and then Sheila Sullivan.
Hi. When my wife and I attempted to move in Evanston in 1980, we were redlined, because my wife is a woman of color and I'm a white guy. So in 1985, we looked around Evanston, and one of the places we wanted to live in is by green space, because we need green space. What other attraction about the Evanston Civic Center Park, black folk are there, white folk are there, brown folk are there, red folk are there. It's one of the few spaces in Evanston, public spaces, where people of different colors come together and meet and see each other there. I also want to remind the neighborhood, the city council, in 1986, the city council was going to turn the green space into parking lot. We formed the Evanston Civic Center Neighborhood Association, and a resolution was passed by the city council to keep that space green. So I want to remind the city council to live by your word. We're not Trump, okay? We're Evanston, we don't change. So I'm urging that the Civic Center green space be remembered, you know, for what it is, and keep as a place for all peoples of Evanston to get together and keep the space green. And it's legal, check your records. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Cynthia Beebe, who will be followed by Sheila Sullivan, and then Ryan Wilmington. And I don't think I see Ms. Beebe here anymore, and so in that case, we'll move ahead with Sheila Sullivan, who will be followed by Ryan Wilmington, and then Jack Jordan.
Good evening, everyone. This is regarding the Harley Clark proposed lease. In the interest of openness and transparency, the fire pit usage provision in Section 1 of the lease needs to be revised and clarified. As drafted, it allows the tenant to concentrate its fire pit rentals on the best dates, most desirable, because it dictates that percentage rentals are calculated on a yearly instead of a monthly basis. The fire pit provision needs to be revised so that the reservation percentages are determined on a monthly instead of annual basis. That would provide fair access for all of the residents. The term "weekend reservations" also needs to be clarified, so that it says weekday, weekend day reservations, which also should be determined on a monthly basis. And also, please clarify whether Fridays considered part of a weekend, because that's almost an equally attractive day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ryan Wilmington, who will be followed by Jack Jordan, and then Linda Damaschek.
Thank you, city council. I'm Ryan Wilmington with Illinois Green Alliance, and I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to learn about the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, meet with experts who are already delivering clean buildings, learning about the available resources to support it, and making adjustments based on the community feedback you've received. Over 20 cities across the country and states even have adopted this policy, and the fact of the matter is that none of the scaremongering claims that people have made have materialized. So I hope that with the adjustments we've made so far, we can move forward with everyone at the table to deliver climate action and clean energy and lower bills to everyone in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jack Jordan, who will be followed by Linda Damaschek.
Hey, everyone. Jack Jordan, I'm the executive director at Climate Action Evanston. I want to start with two things I'm excited for with the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. First is that with the amendments, we will now have three building owners on that technical committee. We really can't do this without you all, so we're glad to have you on. We need to collaborate. We cannot do this without our building owners, so we're excited to collaborate. Second thing is, I'm excited the next council gets to vote on this, making this even more democratic, and the fact that we're going to keep talking about energy use intensity and boilers and energy efficiency for years and years to come, because we all need to, this is really the challenge of our time. And in such a challenge, such a big challenge, I ask that we all have some courage, because people of my generation, we have the courage. And of the 50 young people that have come up here and talked about the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, not a single one has opposed it. And what I'm asking is that the future generations, you, the ones that have the power, the ones that own the properties, the ones that actually have control over emissions, I ask that you have the courage. I ask that you are able to look this challenge in the eye and take the necessary action, because we are depending on you. Thank you all. Thank you for having the courage, and thank you to our volunteers for having the courage to do what needs to be done.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Linda Damaschek.
Good evening, Linda Damaschek, Third Ward. I am speaking tonight about Harley Clark, the lease, which needs to have changes made to have the memo from the law department be incorporated into the actual lease. So after this page here, that's got the city map, this is, this is the page that I'm referring to. In your packet, it's page 382. It's very confusing, because it also shows up three times, 382, 387, and 391 of your packet. Anyway, for 382, you need to change during business hours. So this is, this is referring to when the grounds are open to the public, and it was clarified in the city legal department's memo that it's open from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., the same as the park hours. And it says, "Outdoor areas will remain open to the public for access during the same times that the city parks are open from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m." And so anyway, that is currently not, other parts of this memo have been revised, and this has not been. So this is a legal document, and it needs to be accurate.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now I believe I've got- Thank you very much. Okay, so now I believe I've got everybody, whether they signed up on paper or online, who wants to speak in person. Anyone missing from in the room? Seeing none, we'll move now to the online signups, beginning with Michael Lor, who will be followed by John Kennedy and then Tom Colleton.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
You had me muted. Michael Lor, Ward 7, for 17 years. I'd like to register my opposition to two agenda items. The first, item number A13, the Harley Clark lease. I believe the latest version of the lease still fails to adequately address public use of the park, parking, and beach surrounding Harley Clark. Specifically, two documents most relevant to public access and parking, the public use document and the transportation document, are not specifically mentioned or incorporated by reference into the lease. The lease does not mention that all, the lease does mention that all riders and exhibits are incorporated in the lease, but neither of these documents are labeled as a rider or exhibit. If they are neither, what are they? Basic contract law says these would be referenced or included specifically in a lease. The second item I would like to speak in opposition to is SP 1, the decision to permanently abandon the existing civic center as an option for the city government. The additional studies long ago promised have not been completed, assuming they were ever undertaken. Until that information, until that information is provided to the citizens, there should be no decision to permanently abandon the current civic center.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Kennedy, who will be followed by Tom Colleton and then Aaron Bornstein. Mr. Kennedy, are you able to unmute? All right, apparently not. We'll return to him later. The next speaker is Tom Colleton, who will be followed by Aaron Bornstein. Oh, sorry, John, Mr. Kennedy, go ahead. Mr. Kennedy, can you hear us? Or, well, we can't hear you, maybe, I should say.
Actually, on another Zoom call.
Double zooming. Go ahead.
This is not fun. Can you hear me now?
Sure, just wait till May. Go ahead.
I want to address the civic center situation. I believe the proposal in front of you tonight is basically wrong. Of the items that staff have identified in our, in our proposal, which is to put up, you know, to hire a firm that comes in and does a partial rehab, we showed, you know, substantial savings over the $90 million estimate from staff, which works out to Taj Mahal square foot pricing. Most of the items, as I mentioned, were already taken care of, in our quote. And I urge the council, if you're going to make a fiduciary responsible decision on this, you've got to reach out and get a legitimate estimate on a partial rehab. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tom Colleton, who will be followed by Aaron Bornstein and then John Kozlowski. Mr. Colleton, are you able to unmute? All right, if not, we'll move ahead and come back. The next speaker is Aaron Bornstein, who will be followed by John Kozlowski and then Ezra Shevick. It looks like Mr. Bornstein is no longer in the Zoom, so we'll move ahead with. The next speaker in that case is John Kozlowski, who will be followed by Ezra Shevick and then Justin Cale.
I apologize. I'm back on a need be my.
All right, we're gonna go back. All right. The next speaker is Tom Colleton, who will be followed by John Kozlowski and then Ezra Shevick.
Thank you, Mayor Biss and members of the City Council. I appreciate an opportunity to speak again in opposition of the Healthy Building Ordinance. While we do appreciate staff's willingness to take some changes, the reality is, is this ordinance still is not ready for prime time due to the fact that now we're on our third or fourth iteration since this was first brought forward. So I would appreciate a no vote and allowing this to go back to a rulemaking process prior to the ordinance being enacted and prior to the ordinance being done. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is John Kozlowski, who will be followed by Ezra Shevick and then Justin Cale. Looks like Mr. Kozlowski also has decided not to testify this evening. The next speaker in that case is Ezra Shevick, who will be followed by Justin Cale and then Tricia Connolly. Looks like Ezra Shevick may have left the Zoom as well. In that case, the next speaker is Justin Cale, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly and then Perry L. Davis. Mr. Cale? Looks like you're unmuted. We can't hear you, though. Well, perhaps we'll return to him in a moment. We go on with Tricia Connolly, who will be followed by Perry L. Davis.
Good evening. Tricia Connolly, Second Ward. I'm speaking tonight about SP 1. Understanding the city has ambitions of putting assets to work, you seem to have forgotten that these assets belong to all of us. Once it's sold, there goes the money and the land. Not to mention, our city joins the ranks of renters, enriching the private market on our tax dollar. I agree, there's some lots we could put on the market and see a return. But I strongly oppose this for the civic center. Since the ship has appeared to sail on doing something around rehabbing to return city operations there, I have questions. I believe this is one of our larger publicly owned parcels. Remember all the talk about affordable housing and land being too expensive? Why on earth are we not holding on to this land and putting it in a land trust? Or at least leasing it out, not selling our public land? As a city, do we really want to expand affordability? Or is it more convenient to put that housing elsewhere and give the developers prime real estate to do as they please? Hmm, who gets to live there? This is where the rubber meets the road.
Thank you very much.
It's shameful that this was not put on a referendum in the first place that is not showing that this body really wants to gather ideas for residents.
Thank you very much.
We are watching.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, the next speaker is Perry L. Davis, who will be followed by Justin Cale, if he can unmute.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Davis. Go ahead.
Okay, great. I originally signed up to speak against the Grant Street development, but I see that the planning committee made a great choice in that regard. I'll just add that I really do wish that we take a long-term approach. I don't think it's too late to consider renovation, but to also explore all of our options for the civic center. I've talked to many commercial real estate persons in our community who think that even if we did do renovations or we did a rebuild and combined with the lease department and the fire station, it would take several years anyways. So I don't think it's off the table, and it's something we should discuss. And I think that at the end of the day, land is so expensive in Evanston, it does not make sense for us to let it go easily. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The final speaker, if we can address the tech issues, will be Justin Cale.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we sure can. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm here to state testimony in favor of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. I've been an energy consultant for the last 15 years. Previously worked with a commercial real estate firm that saw efficiency, conservation, and renewable energy as best practices and had learned from some of the finest in the industry. And in my central Ohio home in Columbus, we've seen the building performance standard be a collaborative effort. And the Healthy Building Ordinance will enable you to be able to take some climate action, provide some local investment for both your current and your future generations. These are projects that can be cash net positive and provide both an energy security and an environmental improvement in your future. And that's my comments for the evening.
Thank you very much. Oops, thank you very much. That concludes public comment this evening. We now move to our agenda, as has been our practice in recent meetings. What I'm going to do is solicit removals from the consent agenda now and then solicit a motion to pass the agreed-upon portion of the consent agenda, then move to special orders of business, and then stuff that got pulled. So I know that we need to pull Item A10 to allow for potential introduction and action. Item P1, which is just a discussion and has no required action. And Item P2, which failed in committee. What else would members like to see removed from the consent agenda? Councilmember Reed.
Item A11.
A11.
A9.
A9. Councilmember Burns, followed by Sefredin.
A4.
A4.
A6, A12, and A13.
A6, A12, and A13.
A1.
A1.
A2.
A2.
A10.
A10, we've already got.
A13.
Also, we already have. Why don't I read the ones we have? We have A1, A2, A4, A6, A9, A10, A11, A12, A13, P1, and P2. Would that, if there's anything, if there are other numbers I didn't just name, that, and if folks would like to see them pulled, go ahead. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda except for all of that stuff. I move approval of the consent agenda minus said items. Councilmember Hadakakis moves approval of the consent agenda with the following exceptions: Items A1, A2, A4, A6, A9, A10, A11, A12, A13, P1, and P2. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Sefredin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and zero voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the count of 11 items previously enumerated is adopted. We now move to special orders of business. Does anyone have a motion relative to Item SP 1?
I'll move Item SP 1, which is the Resolution 21R-25, authorizing the city manager to direct staff to move forward with the permanent relocation, or with permanently relocating Evanston Civic Center to downtown Evanston, to a downtown Evanston location, and to begin identifying options for non-municipal use or exploration of an adaptive reuse of the building and property at 2100 Ridge Avenue.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves adoption of Resolution 21-R-25. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. I believe we have a brief presentation from staff.
Yes, thank you. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. I do not want to repeat a bunch of information I said, but there is some additional information that we've developed as the packet was going out. So first, one of the things that we were trying to pull together for council to be able to use as a data point was to understand the cost of the city consolidating, the city hall services consolidating into the main library. And so as we did that, we worked with the library's consultant, Moody Nolan. Basically, we, they were able to build out some additional space on the library on the fourth floor. There's kind of an atrium over the third floor, so a section that can be built out. A section can be built on an adjacent low roof and create more building space. But it does leave us approximately 10,000 square feet short. That would be sort of the equivalent of maybe two departments. We would have to consider relocating elsewhere, such as like the Parks and Rec Department. There's not yet an obvious place for these places to go. But as we are looking forward to doing, addressing our police station needs, there may be some opportunity for some consolidation there. So basically, Moody Nolan divided it into three areas, a library space, a city space, and a core shared area. The total renovation was $64.5 million. However, what we're really trying to understand is what is the additional cost versus what the library is going to do if they just renovate the building themselves? And so that option is $21 million. So the additional cost is around $43 million. The reason why it's so different is because if the library is just renovating it, they are renovating it to maintain big wide open spaces, which they already have. But if the city is going in there, it's much different. We have to completely rework a lot of HVAC, build a number of walls, additional electrical. It's just a much more difficult renovation, or not difficult, just widespread renovation. And so that's why there's such a different cost. Because we would not necessarily divide this, so the library paid this and the city paid that. That's all to be negotiated still, but the taxpayers are the same. And so the difference to the taxpayer is $43.5 million by our current estimate. Another thing that we were really looking at was to look at 900 Clark, which is an upcoming planned unit development in which a private developer who owns the AMC Moving Building on the southeast corner of Maple and Clark is interested in partnering with the city to create a city hall. Their estimated city capital cost, which has been reviewed by staff and seems reasonable, is $43.1 million. And they've provided some annual O&amp;M costs, which, again, reviewed by staff, seems quite reasonable, what they've included and not included. So that completes this table, which we had previously seen. And what you'll notice is the first option, renovate 2100 Ridge, has both an estimated capital cost and an O&amp;M cost, and that comes out to be the highest cost of the options. Options 2 through 4, which are the lease 909 Davis, renovate the main library, and include a multi-floor city hall as 900 Clark street planned unit development, are all pretty much in the same general space. So there are options to move down, there's a variety of options to move downtown, and those run the range of leasing versus owning. Then I was also asked to provide information on the cost of, if we continue to maintain 2100 Ridge, what are ongoing maintenance costs as the building sits vacant? We looked at our cost for staff, materials and supplies, energy, and just the various operations contracts, like the fire panel maintenance system, the elevator contract. And so that comes out to about $29,000. Those are obviously just estimates, but that's equivalent to about $1,000 a day. This does not include emergency repairs. And we have been fortunate in 2024, but previous to 2024, we had a series of years where we had multi-hundred thousand dollar repairs each year. So it's really just a roll of the dice on the emergency repairs. That concludes my presentation. With that, I know that the council is prepared to have a discussion.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Sefredin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been fairly clear where my opinions are on this particular topic. So just to recap really quickly, I think it's time that we face the facts and realize that this building is not suitable for its current use. It's better for something else, and we should not spend any more time, energy, or effort on wishful thinking that we might want to move back here. This building is too big. This building is not functional. This building would be too expensive to renovate in whole or in part. I think downtown is a better location for a civic center. And I think this building is better put to an alternative use. So what I would like to do tonight is not decide where our long-term forever home is going to be. We have more information that we're going to need to have to inform that discussion, starting with what was presented tonight. But we're going to need to do a lot more thinking, a lot more community engagement on that. I also don't want to get into what the ideal future you- I also don't want to get into what the ideal future use of this building is. Again, there's going to be more process, more engagement needed to come up with a solution for this building. What I hope we can do tonight is simply this, to cross this building off of the list of options for the future forever home of the civic center. And I don't come to this conclusion lightly. People are talking about the referendum in two thousand and seven, which admittedly by an overwhelming margin, eighty-three percent, seventeen percent of the six thousand residents who voted in that referendum said they should stay here. As I mentioned last time, there was another ballot referendum with only four thousand three hundred people voting on that, which said, hey, should we pay to fix this place? The answer to that question was no, by a close margin, but the answer was no. And here we are eighteen years later. Times have changed and to say that this process has been rushed is completely inaccurate. This community conversation has been going on since nineteen ninety-nine and kind of came back up to the to the forefront within the last year or two. I want to very briefly review the public engagement we did last fall. We spent fifty thousand dollars on this public engagement, by the way. We did four listening sessions in person. Seventy-nine people showed up. Those six thousand people or the five thousand people who voted to stay in this building in in two thousand and seven, seventy-nine of them came out last fall to a listening session. We had an online poll that was open for seven weeks that received seven hundred and fifty-five responses. We did a formal scientific survey with four hundred registered voters in a statistically valid survey being contacted. The results of that public engagement were fairly clear that Evanston residents of twenty twenty-five are not hung up on twenty-one hundred Ridge. They are in agreement that cost is the number one thing we should be mindful of. Accessibility of the building is number two. I shared my opinions to, to my fourth ward newsletter, which goes out to about twenty-one hundred, twenty-eight hundred people to my personal newsletter, which goes out to a few hundred more. Within the last couple of weeks, I've received a couple of dozen responses. Only one person disagreed with my proposal that it's time to move on from this building. Other than the one person who said we should tear this building down and not move back. Most people were comfortable with finding an alternative use for this building. That's the feedback I've gotten from fourth ward residents. And I'm mindful of the fact that there are folks that I know, folks that I like, who have a different view of this. But based on the facts, as I understand them, the sooner we can make the call to move on from this building, the better. Thirty thousand dollars a month is what is the cost of delay. And we have with the Putting Assets to Work program an opportunity to have a very well-informed and robust discussion about what the future use of this building might look like and how this building can continue to serve the Evanston, the residents of Evanston into the future. I think it's probably going to be some kind of housing, but I don't want to jump to that conclusion. I look at the city council priorities and affordable housing is near the top of the list, economic development, finance, city finances and also climate action. All of those city council goals point to not returning to this building. So I urge my colleagues to support this resolution and we can chart a new future for the twenty-first century. Thank you.
Councilmember Saffron followed by Reed.
Thank you. And Paul, these are probably your questions. Sorry, dude. And Laura, we'll use your number and if everyone's comfortable, let's use a thousand dollars a day as like the bite-sized thing. So it's not really a thousand dollars a day because each day there is additional risk of a catastrophic failure happening. So that's fair and we don't have like a calculation on that. So if the intention of making this move or voting yes on this tonight is to lessen the risk and cut the amount of days we spend a thousand dollars, can you help me quantify what we would be gaining? I mean, obviously like the day after we move out of here, that's a day we're going to spend a thousand dollars no matter what. We weren't going to sell this building or adjust it. What is the advantage being gained by voting yes on this tonight versus not voting on this tonight?
Well, first of all, thank you, City Council for allowing me to approach. I'm Paul Zalmasak. I serve as the Economic Development Manager and never apologize for asking questions. You've got good questions.
Wait a little later.
Hopefully I'll have some good answers for you. So I, from my perspective, and we presented this two weeks ago. The city council agreed to renew a contract with Prop Advisor to implement aspects of the Putting Assets to Work Implementation Plan. So that plan will have an engagement process that will address, and I will get to your direct answer in just a second, that will address the three large properties that that we as a community need to work through to figure out the the future use of that. Our hope, one of the advantages of moving forward with this resolution is that we we can get to work immediately on what those future potential uses are. The time that our consultant is offering is valuable. There's a cost to that. And the more we spend talking about a matter that I think has been, for lack of a better term, litigated through the ways that Councilmember Newsma had mentioned, the fifty thousand dollar engagement process with the the surveys and the like, in addition to how we got here months before that as well. I think there was just general kind of a community engagement around this. I, I think having this option of coming back into this building on the table when we're trying to use time efficiently with the Putting Assets to Work Plan could really slow that down. It becomes, I, it just, it just becomes an additional option we have to consider when I think the community has been generally clear about giving us direction to not consider it. It doesn't mean everybody. It means some of the community.
So right now, pending this vote, there are four options on the table. There's possibly additional options that could reveal themselves, but that's unlikely. We're looking essentially at these four options and only one of those is new construction. The others would involve the uncertainty of renovation. If it's the library, I guess renting doesn't. But continuing to rent at nine oh nine Davis, and I hope it works out awesome, but the thing that may happen there is that as we utilize that building, we discover that there are things that need to be adjusted as we grow into that. So the cleanest option would be the new construction at, I'm just going to call it Chili's until it's not, but it, that's the, that's the cleanest in terms of like no unforeseen circumstances, kind of the issues we've dealt with with this building, with the library. I presume that those estimates are solid right now, but you never know until you start doing things. So like the cleanest, most sterile is the new construction option at Chili's.
Sure. So just to be clear, there's, there not, I believe there's kind of two lines of thought going right here in this conversation. One is, what are we doing with this building? And the reason I think that we would want to approve the resolution is because we want to move on and figure out what to do with this building. The second part of that, I think, just help me understand, is that where do we go if we're not coming back here and what's the cleanest path or or cost efficiency, right?
I guess, I think it's, and everybody appears and the community's best interest to avoid as many thousand dollar days without any sense of purpose or direction as possible. The question I'm asking is, how many day, thousand dollar days, plus like there are really more than a thousand as you get farther down because the risk of catastrophic failure increases. Are we cutting off by voting yes on this? I understand that we don't want to retrace steps. I understand the inefficiency of public engagement, which has happened already, rehappening.
So, so let's have that discussion, right? So it's, it's going to be really hard to put a dollar value on like, how much is it going to cost the community if we?
Can I, can I interject? Do you mind if I try to reset your question?
Please, I prefer that you do.
I think, I think what Councilmember Saffron is saying is, hey, one clear benefit to passing this resolution is it accelerates moving out of here and that saves us money. And it accelerates moving, it saves us at least a thousand dollars for each day that we don't have to be here anymore, because those are all thousand dollar days. How much might we expect this resolution to accelerate moving out of here? So how many thousand dollars might we expect to save as a result of that? Is that, is that your question?
Yes. I mean, we're moving out here either way, as I understand it. I was invited to the ribbon cutting. But, and, and the first set of thousand dollar days are happening no matter what. It's the question of like, when we get into the, what month? Does that make sense?
No, no.
Where are we, when is the bonus, when is the benefit going to be realized?
Right. You're, I don't think anybody's going to like my answer to this and I understand the question and I, I love the way the mayor reframed it. So we're, we're going, with the Putting Assets to Work team, we're going to more quickly get to where we want to go in terms of the final use, which could be housing, could be whatever it's going to be. If we can take that, moving back into the civic center for community use off the table immediately, meaning right now, then literally arguably tomorrow, we can start trying to put together a package to start talking about those other options, right? The library, the Clark, et cetera. So that, that's one argument. If we keep it on the table, then we just have to go through a process. The, the process itself, the Putting Assets to Work Plan for the three properties is going to take a minimum of six months for each, right, to, to go through that process.
So a hundred eighty thousand dollar days no matter what?
Plus.
We do it that way.
Let's think about it this way, too. Let's, let's be really, we, this building has to be put into the marketplace. It has to be kind of planned through a zoning process and then it has to be actually developed, right? So at some point we sell it, that point, or, or let me take that back. We may not even sell it. It could be a ground lease. It could be anything. We don't know yet. But during that time between then, today, it's probably twelve months.
And then, and then I'll stop, because I can't believe it hasn't beeped yet. I don't know if the time changes.
Paul's taking a lot of overtime.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask this and then I'll stop. The, the two directions in the resolution, without passage of the resolution, you cannot do that at all or you cannot do that as effectively?
I hate to do this to you. Repeat the, in, in summary, the two directions. I'm looking at the mirror because, no, somebody.
Direction one is to take this off the list. Direction two is to pursue an alternative use.
Right. I mean, both of those immediately direct our consultant to not pursue using civic uses in this building. It just takes it right off the table immediately. And then it inherently directs us to go to the, to look at those other options.
I guess, and I don't, I don't presume that you're hanging up on anybody who calls, but obviously like having it clear to the potential next user community that we would not be returning here would increase the amount of potential next users.
I, I think, I think the number is fixed, but it's certainly, I, I think if we remove coming back into this building, that provides certainty to the marketplace. There's a fixed number of developers that are going to be interested in parking.
So there's, I mean, there is value. There's a value there too.
Right. They're going to take it, they're, they are going to hear the signal that we're doing something different here and then they're going to immediately mobilize to, to be part of, to be considered as part of the Putting Assets to Work RFQ.
Okay. I appreciate it. I'll make space for others.
Councilmember Reed followed by Kelly followed by Hadakakis.
I appreciate Councilmember Saffron's line of questioning there. You know, well, I know my colleague from the first ward is following me, so I can presume what's coming next, but I will say that I, I think that I'm, I'm not sure if I understand. I feel like when we signed a fifteen-year lease at nine oh nine Davis, we set all of this in motion. And so, you know, I feel like for the folks who are looking for the civic center, for this building, twenty-one hundred Ridge to remain the seat of Evanston government, that battle was lost a few however long ago, about a year ago when we signed that lease. And I think it, it does make sense for the civic center to be downtown or in a more accessible place transit-wise. This building clearly has a host of issues. I do wish that we would have been presented prior to signing that fifteen-year lease for more than the building sold for a few years ago. I wish we would have been presented some of these numbers and at that time, because I think we could have made a more informed decision about our next move. But at, at this point, I think the, I think whether we pass this resolution or not, the, the message is clear that we're not, we're not coming back here. We're not going to leave this building vacant for fifteen years and then move back in when it's in even worse condition. So I, I think I, I don't, I, I think we should just, whether we vote on this or not, it's already happening. So I just encourage a yes vote on this and let's not complicate this more than it, it has to be. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly followed by Hadakakis.
Thank you. So this, I have to say, this feels highly inappropriate that we're doing this just weeks before an election. Once again, this is a rushed maneuver and, you know, Councilmember Newsma, you brought this up. It wasn't even an item. It was discussion. And you moved to for, you know, get a vote to happen on this. And I will say in the past too, even when, when we had a packed library, community room meeting about, you know, the unlimited height on buildings and everybody there in unison was, was denouncing that, didn't want that except for one person. And you said you didn't hear much from your residents. So I, I'm just going to say I question a little bit about your feedback. So, you know, we, we don't lose anything. We don't need to vote on vacating this. Now we need to have sessions, public sessions as to what we want to do with this place. We can do that now. There's no point in voting to vacate it right now. We don't save any money. What we need to do is have, again, these discussions where we talk about what, you know, are we going to issue an RFP? Will the parking lot remain for the park? There's so many things that we need to discuss before that and it's going to be the same amount of time. So I don't see any point in that at all. And by the way, the listening sessions, those were all happening during Envision Evanston. Those weren't public deliberations. We should have had many sessions where we're all deliberating it publicly and hearing from the public. We weren't at those sessions. So those weren't so meaningful. And while I'm, I guess I also have, I, I still believe it's our fiduciary responsibility to get all the options now not to cut off one of them, which is to return and to rehab. I know, you know, everyone said that ship has sailed just because it's one of these, it's like what was the Envision Evanston, but fortunately we were able to get that on a better trajectory. But that was, you know, that's what's going on here. And we don't need to just, as elected and as a democratic process, we don't need to just say, oh my God, that train is gone and we can't stop it. I question the transparency in all this. I don't think it made any sense that suddenly a discussion item and then we're asked to vote on this. And I would like to know, and maybe someone here can tell me, in that act, that, you know, there is a lawsuit now filed by Lovey and Lovely for failure, potentially failure to disclose information to the public. Am I, can you still hear me? Because my screen just of the council member stopped.
Yes, we can hear you very clearly.
Okay. So I'd like to know what is in that October fourteenth packet that was blacked out page after page after page? Can you tell me, was there anything related to the civic center? It was when we voted to direct our city manager to negotiate a lease for the Harley Clark. Daniel or Luke, if you could please let me and the public know, was there anything in that related to the civic center?
Well, obviously I'm not going to answer that question. Let me call on Ms. Rugby, our Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Alex Rugby, Corporation Counsel for the record. So there were pages redacted in that proposal. It was an alternative proposal submitted by the RFP sponsor and just they expressed interest in the ability to apply or submit a proposal for the civic center if that came to fruition. The city blacked that out because it was not under consideration. It was not something we voted on. So everything that the city voted on was in there. It was an RFP to issue a lease for Harley Clark Mansion and that's what the city moved forward with. And just so you know, the redacted pages have been released. And just so you know, the redacted pages have been released via FOIA this afternoon. Thank you.
So why were they not redact, why were they not released earlier and why was Ms. Welch told, oh, these just contain credit card numbers and social security numbers then, until suddenly right before this meeting? This is, you know, this term has been marred by a lack of transparency, rushing and doing things behind closed doors. We've already been found once in violation of OMA by the AG's office around this Civic Center. And I think that's enough. Do we want to be embarrassed again? Let's, let's do this right. There's no reason we have to vote to vacate and let's decide what we want to do, what the future is of this building. I'm fine if we move out, but by the way, I also hear the 909 lease is not working out so well. And yet we signed a 15 year lease because we were told that's all we could get when the, you know, office building environment has never been worse. We have some real issues with this. I think this is the wrong move to move forward, to vote to vacate when we don't yet know what we want to do with it. We should be having responsible discussions about this. That's our fiduciary responsibility to our residents. Thank you.
Point of information. Councilmember, yes?
I, I just want to, uh, it is my understanding, I believe that Councilmember Kelly was conflating FOIA for Harley-Clark with FOIA for, uh, this issue. And so I just want to make sure for the public.
No, no, I'm sorry.
No, Ms. Rugby?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Reed. So I think the reason Councilmember Kelly brought it up is because the RFP for Harley-Clark, the, um, proposer mentioned that they would like the opportunity to submit a proposal for the Civic Center if that came to fruition. Um, and then if the city council and Councilmember Kelly will recall, the unredacted version of this was released to the city council, I believe back in September or October, and this discussion was had with several council members that had questions about this item. Um, and we were, we told council members that had any questions that this was not part of the packet because it was not under consideration.
Councilmember Hadakaris.
Thank you. Um, I for one, um, I, I think, um, have, while I appreciate, um, everyone's fond feelings about this, um, building, um, personally, um, I've always thought the best part is Ingraham Park outside. Um, just want to reiterate something I've told constituents and the public before, that no matter what we do with the old Civic Center, Ingraham Park is staying a park. Um, I know my colleagues feel the same way. Um, so that's staying. Um, there's also, I want to reiterate, when we're talking about putting assets to work, we're going to have a robust public engagement where we look at all the options that might be selling, that might be a long-term lease, that might be a public-private partnership. I personally don't know what we're going to do with this building. I just know that from all the information that we've asked for from staff, all the signs point to this is not the right place to be in the future for municipal operations. And we really should not be letting nostalgia direct our decisions when we do this. We have to be, and I know it's, it's harder for some of us up here who have very fond feelings about this building, but we really need to get out of here. Um, now, question for staff, um, because I know from personal experience, I've actually worked in a building that was ready to be renovated and was half abandoned and there was a lot of issues because of maintenance. From what my, my understanding is, you maintain a, a building a little bit differently if you know you're going to vacate and not come back versus maintain it in order to bring people back. Is there any, has there been any numbers crunched around what kind of maintenance we can kind of drop if we're taking this off the table for returning?
Councilmember, I don't know if we've looked at it precisely that way. One thing that we spent some time debating is the option to mothball the building. And basically you drain all the water out of it, you board up the windows, you turn off the heating and cooling and you walk away. There are some deteriorate, deterioration that begins pretty much as soon as you do that, uh, but is less than the deterioration of sort of halfway maintaining it. And so what staff has considered that if we are able to reach a solution in a 12 to 18 month period about the next generation for this building, that it's probably worth keeping all the heating systems on and the, the cooling and the water and everything. If it's going to take longer than that, we should mothball the building and just drain it, board it up, let it be. Detonation occurs, but if you're going to be doing this for 10 years, uh, such as other buildings, you might as well take that route. So because, um, the council has generally been predisposed towards action and decision-making, our thought is to let the putting assets to work process happen and see what happens over the next 12 months before making that decision to mothball. So then meanwhile, we're bringing people here to check the building, make sure no leaks are developing, running the heat, running the cooling.
Thank you for that. At this, excuse me, at this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Suffernan with a minute 45 left.
Thanks, Paul. Hustle up, dude. I got a minute 45. Um, okay, so sticking to the thousand dollar day concept, let's go through like, and we don't, there's thousand dollar days built into this. We don't want aimless thousand dollar days and, and we don't want extensive thousand dollar days because those can turn into five thousand dollar days or whatever. But if we look at the recitals in the resolution, right? The city manager is hereby authorized and directed to evaluate different options for permanent city hall relocation into downtown Evanston. Okay, we know that has happened. We just saw.
Yes.
That we're aware of that. So this doesn't make anything new happen. Uh, and cease the evaluation of options to renovate the building at 2100 Ridge for the purpose of municipal services. I feel like we've been pretty exhaustively presented with what that might cost and I don't, we just, that doesn't need to be redone, those steps aren't even retraced. The real action is following that where it's the authorization and direction to evaluate options for the non-municipal use and exploitation, blah, blah, blah. That's where this would get accelerated and that's where this would truncate the amount of thousand dollar days.
Exactly.
That need to happen.
Correct.
Okay. And you can't, can you give me a ballpark quantity of thousand dollar days that we would cut out of the world?
That, that's the hard part. I, I'll say again, the, the, I think it's a six month process based on the conversation that we had with the prop visor consultant for putting assets to work. So imagine a six month process max. Maybe it shaves off, you know, you think about like, maybe it literally shaves off 30 days because you're not consistently having to have that same argument about that particular use.
I'm not arguing with anybody, man.
Right, right. No, understood. But we're in the marketplace.
And, um, Laura, I don't, I'm up against it, but like, where is the point where the decision between the like soft, put this thing on chill and full mothballing needs to happen? Is that like an easy to define thing or is that more a question of what the direction here is and?
I think if we're going to turn around and try to repurpose this within a couple of years, then keeping it running and the lights on and everything so that the building systems deteriorate a minimal amount is worth it. But there is a point at which you're just spending $300,000 a year and you're not really getting anything for that. And the building will just start to deteriorate anyway.
I'd like that not to happen. I want to understand though, um, if this passes and everything goes turbo awesome, what is the fastest this building would be reused first? I mean, I, I, I live, I live in town. I'm aware of the, uh, things you're alluding to in terms of long-term boarding up. I, I understand that. I don't think anybody wants that for this building, no matter what. But like Paul, if you were, if this thing passes and you're on the phone tomorrow, give me like a most optimistic.
Okay, I, I'll spell out a, a quick process top of mind. Putting assets to work, I know you're, everyone's sick of hearing me say that the last couple of meetings, six months for that, that's a public process. Then we bring it in for zoning, right? Well, timeout. We have an RFQ process that's probably a 90 day, let's maybe try to make it a 30 day, uh, a 30 day process.
Yeah, check, you be time conscious.
Yeah, this is abnormal high heart rate, lots of questions.
And the questions are working.
So the, so the, um, 30 days of, and I would recommend 60 to 90, but considering the timeline that we're on, we want to make sure that we're getting as much of a response from the marketplace. So an RFQ that gets us, uh, people interested in redoing this building is, um, going to take that long. So six months plus 90, and then, then there'll be a process, hopefully through that six month process, you've kind of, uh, come up with designs and what we want to see happen on the site. So the zoning process won't take that long, but this would be a planned development, right? Um, so the, the potential buyer or leasor or whatever happens is going to have to get zoning, there's going to be a zoning contingency. So I imagine from the time we start, say tomorrow, until the point that zoning is approved and the developer can move forward with, with financing is probably 12 to 18 months.
Okay.
That's how long it'll take.
Okay.
And at that point, we're no longer responsible for the, the property because we'll have sold or leased or whatever we're doing. That $1,000 a day cost goes away.
In 12 to 18 months?
Yes.
Is your belief? Okay. Thank you. This is helpful, sorry to make you back. I think I'm done.
Again, no apologies.
Councilmember Revel.
Um, well, that scenario, um, is certainly a lot speedier than it's taken us to figure out Harley-Clark. So we have had multiple go-arounds, discussions, I think going way back to when Steve Hagerty, prior to his becoming mayor chaired a committee to evaluate potential uses for the, for Harley-Clark. So, um, I'm certainly hoping that it's not going to take us anywhere near that long to figure out, um, a next incarnation for 2100. Um, and I, and I do think, um, getting started on this process is, is, is a really good step for us. Um, I think we're almost unanimously, um, in favor of not using this for municipal offices in the future. And so, um, I'm, I'm fully in support of our going forward, doing all the hard work that it's going to take to come up with a good answer.
Councilmember Wen.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I, this has been a helpful conversation. Uh, I think that it doesn't change my mind. Uh, I do think that making a definitive decision that we are not returning to this building does make it clear to the development community, uh, that, that we are ready and open for all of the potential options that could come, uh, our way. Um, and so I, I, I would urge us to move forward on and vote yes on this tonight and not delay this any further.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly, who has 50 seconds left.
Okay. Well, the development community doesn't know what we want to do with this building. So it isn't expediting anything to vote to vacate it. We should instead, if we want to move forward, we should be having discussions right now with proposals as to what we want to do with it and voting on that. That's what our discussion, our time should be used, not about rushing the vote to vacate. That would be far more productive for developers and for us. And, um, Juan, this isn't about nostalgia. This is about doing what is fiduciarily responsible and what is transparent and, and not just voting forward and then figuring it out later. Um, and so that's what this is about. This, you know, I'm comfortable with whatever we decide, as long as it's done with diligently and that we're reviewing all the accurate numbers. And I still, to this day, will maintain whether we, you know, obviously everyone wants to leave, but whether we stay or go, we have not been presented with realistic numbers as to what it would cost to do, um, a partial rehab for what's needed. So, um, and again, you know, why we signed a 15 year lease, that still I think is, you know, begs a lot of questions. Why we're, why we did that when we only needed it for a few years? Because we know this building isn't even appropriate anyway for us for long-term, the 909. So, um, so I just want to clarify, this is really about being, you know, responsible representatives. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak who's, has not, uh, used all of their time, so Councilmember Newsma, for a second opportunity, if you could be very quick since your time has expired.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to close, um, with an attempt to reframe this as, uh, let's look at not what we're losing, but what we're gaining. Like what we're going to be gaining here is a civic center, uh, located somewhere downtown that's going to be a great place to work. It's going to be a nice place to visit. It's going to be much more accessible to the residents of Evanston. And what we're going to gain at 2100 Ridge is going to be something pretty darn cool based on all the feedback that has yet to come, probably involving housing, maybe mixed income housing and maybe some community spaces. It's going to be really cool. So let's focus on what we are going to gain by this decision rather than what we're losing.
At this time, no one who has asked to speak, uh, once or twice, or anyone whose time has not all expired is asking to speak. So Councilmember Kelly, for a third opportunity, just take a few seconds, please.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much. So one, I know Ms. Welch did not in fact receive Ms. Rugby the unredacted documents that you said she did. Um, and two, you know, I think it's so important that we not, that we first again decide what we're going to do with the Civic Center first. I've heard rumors that we may even potentially face the threat of a lawsuit for this being in a TIF. Um, so, you know, and that might change developers' approach towards this also if we end up, um, having to perhaps change, change this with regard to being a TIF since it is, you know, certainly not blighted, um, territory. Um, so I think, again, I just want to point that out, one, that Ms. Welch has not received the unredacted material and that we really would be far more responsible to decide first what we want to do with this for the developer's sakes, everyone, so we don't spin our wheels with a lot of unnecessary conversations.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Uh, I'm going to, from now on, uh, enforce the five minute time limit, uh, strictly. Uh, Ms. Rugby, followed by, uh, one more speaker.
Yes, uh, I'm unsure if perhaps Ms. Welch clicked on the wrong link, but I did it myself. Uh, the clerk just confirmed it momentarily, uh, just moments ago. So, thank you.
Uh, at this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with three minutes, 10 seconds left.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Kelly, uh, I don't know if it's worth, but.
It's almost certainly not.
Okay. Well, just out of, out of, you know, respect for interrogating, so you mentioned that there is, uh, potential grounds for a lawsuit. I think it's important that if a council member brings that up, uh, that, uh, one, that they've done their due diligence before they say something like that, uh, in a form like this, uh, but two, that, you know, we hear them out. So what grounds have you interrogated that you believe that to be true enough to say it at a public meeting?
Are you allowing me time to respond?
Uh, Councilor asked you a question during the time that he has.
Okay. Yeah, certainly. I've heard, um, more than a couple of, um, people discuss this potential, just like we were facing this issue with the.
No, so, so I'm going to interject here. The question was, what are the grounds of the lawsuit? I think the.
Grounds for the lawsuit are that this is not an obliged area, that there are homes worth nearly a million dollars across the street and that the.
So you're saying not grounds for lawsuit relative to the sale of this potential sale or, or adaptive use of the Civic Center, but rather lawsuit to invalidate the TIF that was adopted several years ago? Is that what you're saying, Councilmember? Lawsuit to invalidate, to invalidate a TIF that was adopted, I think, three years ago?
Right, you're asking me.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes or no? Okay. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you for that. Uh, that just doesn't sound, uh, yeah, doesn't sound plausible to me, uh, based on what you've shared thus far. I, again, I, I think we made this decision a year ago when we signed the 15 year lease. I encourage us to, uh, do whatever the heck we're going to do here to, which is vote yes on this. Um, so I'll in there. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Suffernan. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Uh, we couldn't quite hear you, Councilmember Harris. Was that an aye?
Yes.
Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and Resolution 21-R-25 is adopted. Now on the consent agenda, Councilmember Newsma, do you have a motion on item A1?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A1, approval of the City of Evanston payroll and bills list from February 10th to 23rd, uh, and the amounts shown in our paperwork.
Second. Uh, Councilmember Newsma, the approval of the City of Evanston payroll and bills list. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Seeing the discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Saffordan. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Remove some consent. Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
I recuse myself.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the payroll and bills list is approved. Now on item A two, Councilmember Nusma.
Point of order. I just want to maintain consistency when I have, the real state when a councilmember recuses themselves, they have to state why.
Councilmember Harris, would you explain your recusal on item A one?
Most definite. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm on the list because I purchased, or I paid for items in advance for the Learning Hub that took place about two weeks ago. And the second reimbursement is for the reparations dinner. I had to make an advance payment, so I'm being reimbursed for those items. And I don't want anybody to misconstrue anything.
Thank you for the explanation. Now on item A two, Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of a single-source contract with Christopher Burke Engineering for the Lad Arboretum Canoe Launch Project's EV charging station and structural engineering design services.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the single-source contract just referenced. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns.
I'm sorry. I, I, it was my error. There's a online comment, a question. Councilmember Kelly.
I just wanted a quick explanation why we're single sourcing, sole sourcing this.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly, for that question. This is a, actually, it's kind of a change order for additional services that developed because the city requested that EV charging be included in the design of this public canoe launch and parking lot, as well as some geotech work that determined additional structural engineering design services were needed in order to install the ADA ramp down to the canal. And this change order would exceed fifty percent of the original contract value. By our standard purchasing policies, we usually just enter into a new contract rather than violate that limit. So it's a single-source contract because they're already under contract for similar work.
Thank you.
Now, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Saffordan. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. Sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure. Aye.
Councilmember Harris. Sorry, same. Could you repeat that?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Now on item A four, Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of amendment number one to the contract with Terra Engineering for the Safe Routes to School Sidewalk Improvement Project, Project Engineering Services and the amount of seventy-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of amendment number one to the contract just mentioned. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Burns.
I know senior facilities, senior buildings are also, I believe, among the phase one, you know, in the phase one priority list. Trying to get a better understanding of when, when we're going to start on those and just trying to understand how we're going to prioritize and timeline. I, I've received some complaints about sidewalks near prim towers, and I want to have an answer for them.
Of course. The sidewalk improvement program was revised and began work in twenty-three. It was revised in twenty-two, and it divided all the sidewalks into phases. Phase one is schools and senior living facilities, so we will finish phase one next year and begin phase two next year is our current estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Saffordan. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and amendment number one to the contract is approved. Now on item A six, Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of a contract with Garland DBS Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-five roofing and envelope repairs contract in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the contract just described. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Saffordan.
Yeah, quick question, and I'm not sure. If this is a Laura question or a Paul question, there's a combo. Laura, I got your email, and I just want to note this because this is not anybody's fault, but this is how this happens. When the council voted seven to two to purchase this building, the estimate on the roof was one hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, and we find ourselves with a four hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen-dollar roof repair fee. Laura, in the email, you explained the circumstances. I don't know if you want to do it. I want to offer you the opportunity, but, I mean, this is a building that we purchased with reserve funds, foregoing potential property tax generating uses. It's, by all accounts, an excellent addition to our city's portfolio of recreation options. But this is how, this is how we get where we find ourselves in some cases. And so if you could just help me understand, and I'm asking this in a friendly way, say what you said in the email to me about why this is three times what it was estimated to be at the time of the purchase of the building.
So when the building was purchased, the seller had obtained a quote for roofing, which I think we updated with the, with Hanson Roofing, and it indicated that basically they were planning on rehabbing the roof by just building a new roofing layer over it, which is completely something that happens all of the time, particularly in how residential and commercial construction. However, since then, in twenty-twenty-three, the roof has continued to deteriorate, and there's a lot more leaking happening, a lot more damage to the roof. And so when we look at it, and we did some infrared investigation to determine the extent of the damage by looking what's inside the roof membrane, it was much more extensive at this point. So we are going to tear off the roof and put a new roof on. That will allow us to address some issues with the insulation that has been damaged. It will, but then we have to bring it up to code. We will repair any old abandoned penetrations that are in the roof deck, add new, replace all of the metal flashing. I should have looked before I started talking.
I'm sorry. I put you on the spot. I mean, you wrote me an email explaining it.
So, and then there's some additional work that we have requested since we're doing such a large renovation of the roof. We have requested a longer warranty period. In our current relationship with Garland, they've been very good about honoring warranties, and they will continue to come out and fix the roof as long as the warranty is. They're very good about guaranteeing that. And we are also going to replace the metal cap on part of the parapet. So there's a variety of reasons why it got more expensive, but time passed, it deteriorated faster than we thought, and then our actual replacement is much more rigorous now.
Okay. And I'm asking this again, like, very respectfully and with respect for the work that you do, but as with like the Ben Park Field House or the Ecology Center, where the lesson there was that maybe more destructive testing, is there a lesson that we can learn from this experience?
So there are probably a number of lessons. One of them was we budget certain amount of money every year for roof replacements, and we have a long list. We get the roofs analyzed, and then we put them into kind of a spaced-out CIP based on the results. And I, working with staff, made a decision not to jump the line and have Prieto done in twenty-twenty-four, and because we had not budgeted for it, but we could have pushed some other roofs. And right now, I'm wishing that we had made a different decision, but we made the best decision we could with the information we had at the time.
Okay. I mean, it's understandable that these things happen. Like, I guess our obligation, all of us, is to create a framework where they're less likely to happen.
Yes.
But I just want to note that, again, this will be an excellent community center for a long time, but it was an off-budget purchase, and this is a substantial, well, I mean, it's three times what we thought it would be, and I understand that because, as you explained, it's more extensive than it was proposed to be. But I just want to note it, because it's something that we need to do. All of us need to do a better job going forward. But thank you for answering the questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a related question, and I'm noting that this contract includes a hundred thousand dollars as contingency, which is less than five percent. Do we feel that's enough, given recent experiences with roof repairs going awry? Do we want to have, be, have a little bit more cushion in there just in case?
I'm a little nervous taking a stand on this, given what's been happening lately. But one advantage of things like Prieto is that the roof structure is actually pretty exposed, similarly with the service center and the others. So we can see most of the elements pretty well. There's less opportunity for hidden things to go wrong. So we think that that's a reasonable number.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
If you were following along the agenda and not the packet, as I was initially, I just want to make clear, the roof for Prieto is not two-point-two million dollars, which is on the agenda. There's various roofs that are under this. So I just want to make that clear. The Prieto is, is it four twenty-eight? Is that what we're going with, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
Yeah, something around there.
But there's also the service center here, fire station, five, and, you know, some other ones as well. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
The service center is the big winner here. It's around one-point-six million. So that, that is the biggest cost of the associated roofs.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns. Councilmember Saffordan. Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. Now on item A nine, Councilmember Nusma.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution twenty-nine R twenty-five to allow a pilot program for free metered parking on the first Saturday evening of each month for twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of Resolution twenty-nine dash R dash twenty-five. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Saffordan, followed by Reed.
All right, thank you. So, like, Paul, I guess this question for you that we discussed this earlier, obviously, we're foregoing parking revenue in the hopes of a demonstrated increase in other revenues. It's difficult to track that on the basis of sales tax because you can't do that on like a daily basis. Can you help me understand how and what information we're going to use to evaluate whether or not this was a successful pilot and deserves to be extended or increased or expanded?
Sure, sure. And just so the community understands, the point that Councilmember Saffordan was, was raising is that we can't track sales tax in real time. So we don't know between six PM and nine PM how much sales tax was generated at a specific location. In fact, we don't even know what was generated, usually for ninety to one hundred and twenty days afterwards. So some ways that we thought that we might try to understand, like, look at, looking at various data sets, including placer.ai, that's a tool that anonymizes cell phone data and shows heat maps. So technically, we might be able to see on those specific nights, and you can look at nights and times. We can see if there was a surge in activity during those times. We can do that almost as it's happening, not literally the same day, but. But then, but then some quick time after that. Some other ideas we had, I spent some time with parking manager, interim administrative services director, Mike Rivera. He may be, if he wanted to join in on this, but I think I can get through this pretty quickly. Our enforcement team will still be out during these times because they have to make sure that alleys aren't blocked, driveways aren't blocked, fire hydrants aren't blocked. So there's technology that they can use to count the number of cars out there. We can survey the businesses afterwards just to get a sense for if they, they saw an increase or they, perhaps, maybe it's not a financial increase, but there's a, really a form of goodwill, like, they felt like people were happier and more willing to come to Evanston because we had this, or maybe even the businesses felt better. There's a goodwill associated with that. Can't put a dollar value to that, but that's important. And then really ask the SSAs for some help and some ideas of what they had, like, did they observe changes? What are they hearing from, from businesses? A lot of it's qualitative, less quantitative.
On the front end, who are we relying on promoting this? Will it be coming directly from the city? Will it be the SSAs? Will it be individual businesses? How are we going to promote this?
Yeah, I think, first of all, my division, economic development, will, will push it out through our social media and our newsletters, but because it's parking, it's one of the hot topics in town, so I'm sure our comms team put that in their, their regular newsletters. And finally, the special service areas, no doubt, the business districts will, will help pay the charge.
Just if I could respond, because I.
Stop the clock. I'm using all five minutes.
I'm, I'm taking Paul's time.
I yield to the mayor.
I spoke with our communications manager, Cynthia Vargas, today on, you know, preparing for the, in the event of this past, saying that I think it's important for the city to partner closely with the SSAs, the non-SSA business districts that are organized as well, the chamber, and individual businesses to do a, a really coordinated communications plan between now and the first Saturday of April if this passes. And I think it's important for those communications to include working with the businesses in advance to establish some ideas for how they can collect data that they're comfortable sharing about the success of this, understanding there's a lot of sensitivity about sharing lots of types of, of granular sales data with the government.
And Paul, one other question. So I'm presuming the first Saturday of December would have already been covered under our holiday free parking, so we're really talking about April to November in terms of where this would be in effect. Is that correct, or am I wrong about that?
I'm not, I'm not following the question.
Like, you know how we do our free holiday?
Yes.
That would happen in December, so the first Saturday of December doesn't really count as we're offering anybody anything.
Right. I mean, in terms of tracking data.
No, no, no. In terms of like, what we're talking about in parking revenue being.
Correct.
Forgone.
Right.
It is the first Saturday of every month from April to November.
Correct.
Not including December.
Well, that's fair, because we've traditionally had that.
Presuming that the next council continues that generous option.
That's right.
So when will we sit down, or when will the next council sit down and evaluate the effectiveness of this on a periodic basis, or once the whole thing is over?
Sure. I would, I would ask for direction on that from the city council. I mean, this is something that we could bring to, we could bring this to the Economic Development Committee, have that as an agenda item where we're giving an update, hey, last month, this is what we learned. We could do that for a series of months if that's.
I think, humbly, the most effective thing would be to have some information so that the next council can make that decision in the context of the twenty-twenty-six budget.
Yes.
Because I, I think this information would be useful in figuring out if there should be modifications to parking policy and what that potential financial benefits or costs related to that would be. So when is it a meaningful set of months and provide enough time to have it be part of the budget discussion?
I would recommend that you give it a ninety days. You, you got a season changing, you got different kind of shopping habits changing, you've got graduation from Northwestern, that kind of thing.
So like, if this were to go to economic development, that would be a meaningful thing to have happen in August, September, figuring that October is when the budget.
I would argue that you probably wanted to, to make that move in July.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, you do it. All right. So does that make sense to have this be evaluated by whatever appropriate committee? I mean, that sounds like a referral, but somebody should look at this in July. We'll figure out who's sitting up here, and they should do it.
It sounds like a plan.
All right. Thanks, man.
Councilmember Reed, followed by Burns, followed by Nusma, followed by Revel.
Thank you. I have major concerns with this. I think the, the research is clear, undeniably clear, that providing free, there is a, a large cost to providing free parking, and actually, the, one of the preliminary researches on this issue actually just recently passed away, so rest his soul. But this is, if we're looking for data on this to prove something that's already been proven, then I think we should just fully dive in. that's already been proven, then I think we should just fully dive in and do it. And instead of doing this on Saturday evenings, let's just do a full month of this program and see what the impact is. Maybe we want to do two, three months if we want to get a bigger period of time to see the impact. And I will, I'm not a betting man, but if I was, I'd bet quite a bit on the fact that this would not prove to be fruitful. You know, maybe there'd be some goodwill amongst folks, but goodwill don't pay the bills for the businesses in our city nor for the city itself. So I think if we're going to do it, we should do it right to get the full data. I'm curious, how are parking rates, meter rates, how are those set? Are they set by ordinance? Is that something, Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, members of the city council. Mike Rivera, Administrative Services Interim Director. Yes, the rates are codified. They are part of an ordinance. And rates vary throughout different sectors of the town, depending if it's a four-hour, 12-hour, two-hour rate limit.
Thank you. So rates are set by code. I'll direct this next question to Council Ruggie. If rates are set by code, we can suspend the law with a resolution?
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. So I believe according to this resolution, we're just not enforcing them during this time. So we're not changing the rate. We're just not enforcing them. We've passed similar resolutions, like the vacation rental moratorium, for example, via resolution. So especially because it's a pilot program and we're just not enforcing payment during that time, it's not a permanent change.
Okay. And then also to the question I think Councilmember Sufferton brought up around how do we track the efficacy of this? Are we able to, I mean, I know we're talking about metered spots and not necessarily, well, let me clarify. Are we only talking about metered spots? Are we talking metered spots and garages?
No, we're only talking about parking metered spots.
Metered spots, okay. And is there any way, I know for the garages there is, but is there any way for businesses to give out codes, you know, for free parking at a metered spot?
That is something that you can be considered, but we would have to discuss that with our mobile app vendor. And we would have to, there may be fees that would apply for codes to be used through the mobile app as well, that the city would have to incur if we offered free parking.
Okay. I think that's potentially worth exploring. My big point is if we're really going to get the data from this, because the sales tax data, because the sales tax data comes essentially at a month-by-month basis is what we're looking at. I think that's the best way to measure this and compare it to, you know, the trends of previous months and, you know, months of previous years, like months of previous years. So I think we should just do a full 30-day pilot with this if we want to get the data. If we're doing this just to, what is the point of this? Can I ask the sponsor what the point of this is?
The point of this is that I would say there's a lot of discussion about the interaction between parking policies and economic development. And it is my view that doing what I think we often hear suggested, which is to say getting rid of paid parking would be unworkable for this community. But also that potentially we could do things in a different way than we currently are doing them in a way that would be better. And so it's a small experiment in an effort to learn about alternate approaches to handling parking that may be on net better for the community.
So the experiment is to see if offering free parking has a net positive impact on sales tax revenue on what specifically?
I mean, I would say the health of our business districts.
Which would be measured through sales tax revenue?
Well, the exact reason why my previous comment in response to Councilmember Sufferton talked about working with businesses prior to the implementation of this to establish metrics on their side is that I think it's, from the city's standpoint, sure, sales tax, liquor tax, revenue are the most obvious metrics. But I think I would argue that if the net effect on city revenues is neutral, but the effect on the economic health of small businesses in Evanston is positive, that's information worth knowing for us. And so I think there's a variety of metrics that are worthy of consideration here.
Outside of sales tax, liquor tax, can you name one of them or two of them?
I mean, well, moments ago, I suggested that it would be good to work with SSAs, the non-SSA business districts, the chamber and individual businesses to establish some experiments. And so ask questions like, for instance, are there some restaurants, particularly perhaps restaurants who have expressed ongoing concerns about our parking meter system, who would be willing to, let's say, without divulging any raw numbers, share percentage differences between revenue numbers on Saturday nights with the removed fee and Saturday nights that don't have the removed fee? So you could see if it has an impact on local restaurants. That'd be an example.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I know that we're going to move forward with this because I know my colleagues at this point, but I think those are things that we should have in place before we make this decision. It's, I mean, the, I think moving forward with this, when the research nationally points in one direction, we've had at even Economic Development Committee, we had our partners at CMAP come in and give a presentation on, and this is pretty early in the term, on how policies like this are actually not beneficial to our local businesses. And so I think we're, I think the data is going to be clear on, or I think the data is not going to be clear because we're not really, there's no metrics that I'm hearing that we can actually measure. And so there's going to be the same 20 people who, you know, send us emails about free parking and they'll maybe be slightly happy, maybe not happy enough because it's only Saturday evenings. And so there will be a tiny bit of goodwill, but if it doesn't increase the bottom line of our businesses or the city's bottom line, and it only costs us money or, you know, has a slightly negative effect on the city, then what are we doing? We're giving away free parking when we could be using those resources for the, you know, more important things in the city, like affordable housing, like, you know, actually investing in our economic districts in a meaningful way and not in this, what I feel is, feels politically expedient, but in reality is, from what the data shows nationwide, is not going to bear out. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Newsma, followed by Revelle.
I hope, I hope that we are verifying if we're, if the sales tax revenue is a metric, I hope we're verifying that ourselves and not only relying on the businesses to give us to shoot out some kind of random percentage, but that we're looking at something more concrete than that. I'll talk more with you, Paul, about that offline. A question, I think, for Mike, for you. What is the potential revenue loss if we add the garages? I think I saw what we're planning now is maybe $46,000 if my math is right.
Approximately 40, 42 to 48,000 a year.
If we add the garages?
No, no. If we just do the parking meters alone, it's approximately 42 to 48,000 a year, just doing the first Saturday of every month.
That I understand. And then if we add garages, what would that be potentially?
I would have to look at that data.
And I say that, and I guess my next question before I go into why I ask that is, why, why not the garages as well?
It wasn't considered the garages. The streets and the garages, the volumes, they all dip much lower in the evening times than they do during the day. And at those times, when people are looking to patronize restaurants or bars in the evening, they're using, they're looking to utilize the on-street parking versus the parking garages because there's more availability at that time.
Yeah. And I mean, I guess one of the hopes is that this would increase the amount of, you know, it would decrease the vacancies on on-street available parking. You know, increasing the need for garage parking. And because that's what we probably want to happen, and because I think it's easier to, I think there's some ways that we can track garage utilization in ways that might be difficult to do for on-street parking. It just seems something, like something we should include. So I guess to the people that made the referral, why not add garages?
So if I may interject real quick.
Yeah, please.
You know, one of the items that came before the council tonight was replacing the parking access revenue control systems in all the garages that we're intending to do this summer. With the current equipment that we have now, if we were to go into free mode like we do for snow parking, we wouldn't know how many people utilize the garage because we would simply have to put the gatearms up at a certain hour. Like in this case, they would just go up between 6:00, 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM. So we wouldn't know, we wouldn't have a car count of how many vehicles took advantage of the free parking.
Okay. And there's no simple fix to that? That's just a limitation of our, the current system we're using?
No. I mean, in the future, when, once we're done replacing the equipment, we'll have QR Read technology. So at that point, we can work with our vendor to release QR codes for snow events or for promotional events. And we can release a certain amount of QR codes that we can ask people to download and then they can use that on their mobile devices, go in and out of the garage. And we'll be able to have a better estimate of how many people took advantage of our promotion. One of the other things I think my colleague here, Paul, alluded to as far as some data tracking tools. So the city has license plate recognition on their vehicles. In the evening, we have a lot of parking meters. We have approximately 2,000 parking meters from the Howard to Central Street border. We only have three people on staff between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM on a Saturday. So one of the things we could do is strategically target certain areas, busy areas in each business district, like Central Avenue, you know, 17, 1800, 16, 1700 Sherman and so on around different areas. And we can do, we can do license plate scans and try to attempt to compare that against our paid wheel tax database so that we can have an understanding if the vehicles that are parking in the strategic areas are Evanstonian, Evanstonians with Evanston registered vehicles, or if they're not and they're, they would be indicative of visitors coming to Evanston.
Yeah, I was going to go there next. To finish off the garage thing, I mean, it sounds like, you know, our tech is limiting in what it can do, but if it wasn't, it would have been nice to add garages because I think it would be easier to track garage utilization on the weekend if we, if the technology had those capabilities. Also, on-street parking I see is like the highest, it's like a high priority for business. That's where you want the most turnover, right, is the high priority parking where you can pull right up to a business and step right in essentially. And that's not obviously always the case. Sometimes you may have to walk a block or two. But regardless, that's where you want the turnover. And so if anything, I would have liked to see us do this with the garages so that we can kind of encourage, still encourage more turnover with the on-street parking that's in front of businesses and really push people to use garages, which I think is something that we want to encourage more people to do anyway, especially if we don't continue this. But again, there's some limiting factors in the technology. In terms of following up on what you just said, is there a way to use that now as a baseline? Because this doesn't start till April 5th. Can we scan now on-street parking in these areas to understand just, it doesn't even, to me, it doesn't even matter Evanston versus non-resident, just, you know, parking availability, you know, get a baseline now so that by the time this is implemented, we have something to compare it to. It's not perfect, but I think we just, we need some way to measure this.
Sure. So first of all, we need, we would need to identify like what's going to be our target blocks through all the different business districts is the first thing. The second thing is that we're looking to offer this on Saturdays. So there's not very many Saturdays between now and April. So, you know, we would have to try to get those one or two Saturdays that are less than, left in the month.
Yeah.
In between that target time of 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM and to see what the car counts look like now in those same strategic areas and then keep monitoring those areas throughout the whole pilot program.
Well, again, I think if we're going to do this to, I think the point has been made a few times that we should be, we should be able to measure success. And so I think it would be worth, I don't know if I need to make a motion or if that's something that we can just do administratively. But to me, it makes sense to try to set a baseline now using the remaining Saturdays that we have. And we have the, we certainly have the technology to do that. And in terms of knowing what areas, I would hope we also understand the target areas before we move forward with that. So both of those things seem like something we should be doing anyway. And if there's no objections by the folks that refer to this, that's what I would like to see.
If I could interject with the point of information. The proposal is for first Saturdays of the month only. So we will have a good comparison for the second, third and fourth Saturdays on an ongoing basis. To speak to your benchmark question, it's important to be able to compare the data for sure. But we'll have, the benchmark is kind of built in since it's only one Saturday a month.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. I still would like to do some baseline beforehand, but that's a good point. Thank you.
Correct. And if I can interject, so the free parking will be for all the business districts, for all the parking meters. Since there's 2,000 meters approximately, staff would not be able to do complete scans of the whole town. So this is why I suggested strategic blocks in all the business districts. You know, we know where are the busy blocks in the business districts. So strategically outline those blocks so that we're constantly
You have any suggestions on where that, those might be?
Like if we were talking about downtown, you know, I can easily say like 16, 1700 Sherman, portions of, of Orington, portions of Davis are busy target blocks that we can continue to monitor month over month.
Okay. That's all. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Revelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this as an experiment. I appreciate what Councilmember Reed is saying about the high cost of free parking, which is a book available at the library, to which you can walk or bike for free 365 days a year. So I just wanted to leave that there, that we are investing in infrastructure to make walking and biking safer and more viable means of transportation in Evanston. So I'm going to support this as an experiment. We'll see, we'll see what happens.
Councilmember Revelle, followed by Kelly.
Well, I want to follow up on Councilmember Sufferton's query about when we would be getting a report about what the impact seems to be. And I think we said July. And I guess I would, tonight, there's been a lot of ideas thrown out about how we might measure it. But I would think that the Economic Development Committee should have an update at its next meeting about, you know, which measures have we decided to pursue? Or, you know, just what kind of fine tuning still needs to be done. So rather than waiting two or three months to start showing what the data shows.
Sure. May I respond to that? I'd be glad to, I've already placed that on my kind of internal planning calendar to make sure that we get the ball rolling, whether that's a special meeting in early April because we don't have a March 31st meeting this year or something like that, March 28th. We're supposed to meet at the end of April. We might sneak one in at the beginning of April as well. So at some point in April, we'll start the conversation on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. My concern is that, you know, just once, the first Saturday of every month won't really provide us with the kind of data that we need to see how it could, how this may potentially impact positively economic development, sales tax. I really think it needs to be more so that residents can get into routine, I think, remembering, oh, this is the first Saturday. I just, I don't think we're going to get sufficient adequate data. I think it would have to be more, maybe every Saturday, to really be able to assess that. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. So we move to Councilmember Reed, who has 10 seconds left.
All right. I'll just say that for my colleagues, you know, who are firmly on the opposite side of this issue to me, Councilmember Kelly, I would encourage folks like yourself to even support holding or tabling this. I think that you're right. I believe I know what the data is going to show up, prove out. But if we don't do this right, we're never going to convince people like Claire or others who believe this idea that this is not the right course of action. So if the point is an experiment to prove out one way or the another, or another, we have to do it right. And so I would encourage us to do that. And I think this needs a bit more time to look at and come up with those metrics. So I would propose that we hold this, I would move that we hold this till our next meeting at a minimum. So that's the motion.
Councilmember Reed moves that this item be held. Councilmember Burns, second. Is there a motion to overturn the hold? Seeing none, oh, sorry.
So move.
Councilmember Newsma moves to overturn the hold. Is there a second? Councilmember Sufferton, seconds. None of this is debatable. Will the clerk please take the role in the motion to overturn the hold?
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Hakkaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
This is to overturn the hold, right?
Correct.
Okay. So yes.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and five voting against, the motion fails to receive the required two-thirds majority. The The hold stands. This item will be on the March 31st City Council agenda. Now on item A10, Councilmember Newsma. This is, Councilmember Haddakaris, do you want to make a motion to suspend the rules here?
I, I got it. Mr. Mayor, I move, I move to suspend the rules and consider item A10 for introduction and action this evening. This is ordinance 24025, authorizing the city manager to negotiate the sale of city-owned real property at 2221 Kinney Street.
I'll second. Councilmember Newsman moves to suspend rule 21.2 to allow introduction and action of ordinance 24-0-25 this evening. Councilmember Haddakaris, seconds. Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
Point of information, I suppose a motion to suspend the rules is debatable, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. So I just have a question on why we're suspending the rules.
I will let Paul Zee answer, but it's a timing thing here.
Thank you for the question. So essentially, there, the, I think it's 680, 68021 requires, which is the sale of city-owned property. There's a two-step process for that. It's getting the authority to negotiate and then later getting the authority to execute the contract. Between those times, there is a requirement that we publish in a local newspaper. The timing of that publishing, because you're not meeting on March 24th this time, really throws the timing out of whack, for lack of a better term, and would result in us not being able to transact on this property until mid to late April, based on the legislative timeline. So this helps keep that within kind of a 30-day process.
Okay. So this, to be clear, based on what you said in the, and maybe this is for legal counsel, the steps with the ordinance, this isn't the city, will this come back to council and we'll have to actually approve the sale? So then why is, if that's the case, why isn't this a resolution authorizing the city manager rather than an ordinance?
Because the city code requires it to be an ordinance.
Even to authorize the negotiation?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Do we have an appraisal on the property?
Councilmember Kelly, yes, we do, we do have an appraisal. I would have to open the, my laptop to, to find the appraisal. What's the question?
Just to, on what we're negotiating, if, if we have an appraisal by which we're negotiating this, it's not, it's not in the packet, right? I don't.
Correct.
That's being used for the basis of the negotiation?
Correct.
And why don't we have it?
Generally speaking, because we're getting authority to negotiate, we tend not to want to publish what the appraised value is because we want to have kind of the upper hand negotiations.
But I mean, it's public property, right? I mean, it's our property. I mean, you can't really like keep.
Correct. So as part, and let me just be very clear to the public and to remind the city council that we have attended executive session to discuss this matter. And, and, and at some point, that information will be public, but we cannot enter, we can't go into negotiations on behalf of the city if, if, if the numbers are public before we even start a conversation with, with potential.
I mean, I just think because the public owns it, I've been hearing people say, well, what's it worth? What is our land? You know, like that. I'm not 100% certain that we, as a public body for our own property that the public owns, withholds appraisal numbers.
Right. My apologies, just point of order. The motion on the floor is regarding suspension of the rules.
Okay. No, I, well, I'm trying to.
Right. I just, again, I, I just want to repeat that, pardon me, the, the representative body of, of the city, of Evanston residents reviewed this in executive session per our requirements, per our city code. And I don't know if Council Ruggie wants to add to that. So everybody on the dais is aware of the number and are representing the people of this community.
Councilmember Haddakaris.
Sorry, I thought, I just want to say, I just, I've been asked by residents, like, what's it valued at? So.
Councilmember Haddakaris.
I, I will also ask, add that I've had meetings with the neighbors in that, in that neighborhood multiple times to talk to them about direction from what they would like to see there. And that's also, they are well aware of what's, of what's happening as well. So they've been engaged quite a bit in this because it's a property that was frankly kind of a blight on the neighborhood, and I felt it very important to get a lot of feedback from them as to what future owners would look like. So I'll just leave it at that.
Will the clerk please take the role on the motion to suspend the rules?
And just point of order, just, a point of information, I have to say, because I think it, just the way this is written could be unclear. So the motion to suspend the rules requires unanimous vote, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Sufferden? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion receives the required unanimous majority and Rule 21.2 is suspended, facilitating pass, final passage of ordinance 24-0-25 in a single evening. Councilmember Newsma, do you have a motion?
So I move passage of ordinance 24025 with one vote.
Councilmember Newsman moves introduction and action on ordinance 24-0-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Burns?
I'm only bringing this up now because I don't think it, it puts us at a disadvantage of the negotiation. I want my colleagues to have a heads up on what I, a motion I plan to make when this comes back. And I want to give Councilmember, Council Ruggie a heads up on this to see if there's any concerns about it. I would like to see this money be used for reparations, similar to the obligation, pension obligations that Councilmember Kelly always reminds us of, and I think we all are reminded of, that is also an obligation. The previous council kind of expected more revenue out of our cannabis sales tax revenue. It has not yielded that. I don't think there is any, that there's a chance it, it will at least anytime soon. I don't think there's gonna be any additional interest in dispensaries right now, nor any other cannabis business type that would, would yield more revenue. We, we, we told people that we were gonna try to do 80 a year. I think this year, we're, we're barely getting 40. With, with this funding, with what I think we can get, we probably can add, well, I won't go into that, but I, however much money it is, we can apply it towards reparations and, 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 and move forward on this really important obligation. I know from talking to Councilmember Haddakaris, I think it was, he, he just had some potential legal concerns on whether or not, you know, you would advise us to use these funds in that way. And so I'd like that reviewed between meetings so that, so that we can make a decision at that point. And, and again, I, I think this is the, there's, there's other cities that are doing similar reparatory justice work that are using, you know, the proceeds of, of these type of sales towards that work. It's something that we didn't expect to have. It was unanticipated. It is unencumbered. It is unallocated. It is the best type of funding for something like this. And again, is, if there is no kind of legal issue or concern, I plan to make that motion at the next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
When the city sells a property, there is no, well, let me just ask, is there a real estate transfer tax collected?
No, the city is exempt under the real estate transfer tax.
Okay. And so I think that strengthens the argument because normally the city would, the reparations fund would receive some of the funds from the real estate transfer that would occur with the property of this type. And so I, I also agree, given the maybe foreseeable, you know, if you really thought about the numbers back in 2019 or 2020, dip, decline and dip and stalling of, of cannabis sales tax revenue, I think it makes sense to look at this or, I mean, I don't see a difference between transferring the funds here or a general fund transfer. It's, the, the money would generally go to the general fund anyhow. So to me, it's all, all the same. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns?
So, sorry. Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry, is this, just for clarification, this is not land that could be developed as mixed income, like land trust? That we would want, I'm just, want to understand.
Director Flax, do you want to speak to the possibility of developing housing on this land?
This land is zoned industrial. It's not really appropriate for residential use.
Thank you. Now will the clerk please take the role?
Why, why not? I'm just sorry, what is wrong with the land? Is it the location?
Okay, if I may. So the, the land is, it's essentially landlocked between Home Depot and several industrial buildings nearby is also nearly an acre of utter repair. It's kind of on the backside of an Aldi, like where they have the dumpster. So there's, there's a number of reasons why, but specifically it's zoned industrial and residential is not allowed in industrial zones. There's a no further remediation letter on the site. Just, it precludes residential.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Will the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferden?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haddakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 24-0-25 is introduced and passed. Now on item A11, Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item is A11, which is ordinance 4025, amending the city code to reduce the city's liquor tax and also increase the home rule sales tax. I am gonna make a motion to refer this back to ANPW. We intended to have some discussion at ANPW, which we were unable to do this evening. So I would like to have that discussion at the committee level.
Can I just, I want to hear interpretation of the motion. Are you moving that it go back there for a hearing on March 31st, which is their next meeting?
Do we need to specify a time?
Well, I think, no, we don't need to, I guess. The chair can make the determination. All right. Councilmember Newsman moves that, that ordinance 24, nope, 4-0-25 be referred back to ANPW. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I, I support that, well, really, I support voting this down now. I, I've been quite involved with following this through the Liquor Commission. And, you know, I, I get what businesses are, are asking for, but I, I just want to be clear. Lowering the liquor tax eases, certainly eases costs for purchasing alcohol, but increasing the general sales tax spreads the tax burden across all consumers on most purchases. And sales taxes are generally considered, are broadly considered regressive. And that obviously means if they take a larger percentage of income from low-income residents than from wealthier residents, and lower-income residence households tend to spend most of their income on consumption and necessities. So even a small sales tax hike can claim a higher share of their limited income. By contrast, a high liquor-only tax was more narrowly targeted at those buying alcoholic beverages, a form of discretionary spending that doesn't affect all households equally. And so now even residents who purchase alcohol, including many low-income families, will pay slightly more on everyday taxable goods, including clothing and household items. And so, you know, this, this proposal is tremendously regressive. If we think that lowering the liquor tax, this is like a form of, you know, trickle-down economics in some way. If we think that lowering the liquor tax is going to increase liquor sales, then let's lower the liquor tax to a point where we can see, you know, a kind of offset where we lower it a certain amount and that somehow boosts sales and thereby we, we break even. But I don't think that, you know, what consumer in Evanston is going to their, you know, to the bar or to wherever they're going, unless it's a, it is a, like a catered event, a, an event that they're planning, you know, the average consumer isn't thinking about the 6% sales tax versus what other communities are charging. I don't think I've ever looked at my, I'm not a big drinker, but I don't think I've ever looked at my bill and thought, darn that, 6% Evanston sales tax, I'm not gonna, you know, buy my alcoholic beverages here, I'm gonna go to Chicago and pay, you know, one of the most complicated formulas for a liquor tax that, you know, you could maybe think of. And so through, with our equity lens, with our public health lens, we know that alcohol is, has serious public health concerns. That's why you tax something like alcohol at a higher rate. I'm sure we'd be taxing cannabis at a higher rate than 3% if the state law allowed us to. And so I, I think that this is bad policy. It's, it goes against the values of Evanston. It, it, it rings of Reagan-era Republican trickle-down economics, but with alcohol. And I, I just think that we can find better ways to, to solve what may or may not be an issue. If we want, as I said, if we want to lower the liquor tax because we believe it'll increase sales, let's do that. Let's experiment with it. But raising the cost for a, a mother to buy food for her children, to buy diapers for her child, if those are taxed in the same way, but to buy household necessities is, is not the way to go. And I encourage my colleagues, not only to not send this back to, or certainly send it back, but I would encourage us to just vote this down. Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferden.
I just want to be clear, and I apologize if I'm not. This is for introduction, and we were supposed to talk about three potential options. And we want to send it back to Administration Public Works because we want that conversation to happen there. Like, was there, I'm, I'm just missing, why not just do it right now? We're all here. Is there?
I don't think we're ready to have that discussion now.
May I ask why?
Have you done anything on this item since it last came before council or committee?
I mean, I, I just, we're kicking it back to do what? To have a discussion?
Right. This is, this has been an ongoing thing, and when it last came to ANPW, which was, I'd have to look up the date, we talked about it, but there was not a consensus on the committee. We didn't come to a conclusion. And in the, you know, subsequent months since that discussion happened, we haven't done anything.
Okay. And I guess, I appreciate the points that were made, since there are a lot of factors in how we tax things and what it costs, but at the end of the day, it's a budget thing. Clayton and Tash, when do you need certainty on this to put the 2026 budget together? I mean, obviously, the whole budget doesn't hinge on this, but I, I'm, I'm for kicking it back, having all the discussion, but like, when do we need to have any?
That, I can answer it. So the one, the one thing that I insisted on here was that all the options be revenue-neutral. So there shouldn't, if, as long as we go with one of the options in the packet or the status quo, there should be no budget difference between any of those options.
I budget 2026 time. Okay. Sorry to make you walk up for nothing, man. You look great, though. It's good to have you here. All right. So the motion is to kick this back to Administration Public Works. And then the alternative is to do it now? Okay. I like yours.
Councilmember Revel.
I, I have a, I guess basically an interjection. It's not going to the substance of which of these options is the best option. I would just like to call everybody's attention to the fact that the draft, both drafts, drop a very important paragraph that I want to make sure does not get dropped. So, there's a paragraph that says, here's what the liquor tax should be or not be, but it drops the paragraph, "For any amusement or athletic event in the city with a capacity of 5,000 people or more, audience members, a tax is hereby levied and imposed upon the privilege of purchasing beverages containing alcoholic liquor at a total rate of 12% of the purchase price, exclusive of any other tax charged, blah, blah, blah." So, this is very important in terms of taxing alcoholic beverages sold at Ryan Field. So, I want to make sure we don't drop that paragraph, please. Thank you.
Yeah, can the legal department make a note to make sure that's corrected the next time this comes back to ANPW?
Absolutely.
Thank you. No one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Reed for, with one minute left.
Thank you. I have a few questions for staff. If my time is paused as they're walking up. Particularly for Attash or Clayton, whoever. Come on up. Clayton, great. Is there any, so, we're anticipating that, so, one, the current, what is the current annual revenue that we receive from the liquor tax?
It's approximately $3 million.
$3 million, okay. And then, what are we anticipating with this change from liquor tax? If we were to adopt this new ordinance, we would anticipate how much revenue annually?
As the mayor said, every option that we put forward is--
Revenue neutral, but I mean, just from liquor tax. What would we anticipate from liquor tax if we were to amend this ordinance?
Amend it with which option?
Any op, I mean, I think they all move the liquor tax down the same amount, is that correct?
No, the food and beverage tax would, would get rid of the liquor consumption tax and replace it with a food and beverage tax of 1.5%. So, we would collect, you know, less than a million from liquor sales if we go with the food and beverage tax. The packaged liquor tax, comboed with the food and beverage tax, would again result in less than $3 million from liquor sales, with a small portion coming from food sales instead. And then, the increasing the home rule sales tax would again reduce the amount from $3 million from liquor sales to a smaller amount of that $3 million coming from liquor sales, and the rest coming from the general merchandise that you commented on, not including, I think you mentioned groceries, and groceries are exempt from the home rule sales tax. So, it would not impact, if we increased the home rule sales tax, we wouldn't collect more from groceries.
Okay.
Or toiletry items, or, you know, those types of--
So, then what sales items would we be collecting it from if not?
Car sales, furniture sales, other general merchandise sales, Sam's Club.
So, when I go to Whole Foods and buy toilet paper, I'm not paying sales tax?
I'm fairly certain that toilet paper is exempt from, from sales, from home rule sales tax. We're talking about the home rule sales tax only.
Kaboo. It's like the bamboo toilet paper, it's only five bucks.
Yeah, toiletry items, diapers, groceries, exempt from the home rule sales tax.
Okay, that would be helpful to, I don't know if in the packet there's a breakdown--
This is why we need to--
Yeah, exactly. This is the case of why we need to look into this more. So, with that, I will yield. Thank you.
Will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to send this back to ANPW, where there will doubtless--
I have a comment.
Oh, at this time, no one, Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry, I just wanted to say, I think, I shared a letter with everybody from, from a couple that lives north of us, who said they weren't going to come here anymore, they used to eat here all the time on their way to, he's a comedian, on his way to performances in Chicago, but because of the taxes, it was so high. I don't think that we necessarily need to make this revenue neutral. I think that it's kind of like the parking. I think we need to consider that by simply lowering the liquor tax and then looking at, you know, in terms of potential, I mean, every, I think we need to address this as an economic development approach and look at more than just liquor tax, but there, I think there are a lot of things we need to look at in terms of attracting people to Evanston and keeping people in Evanston dining out here, rather than going, going north or to Rogers Park. So, you know, I hope we can look at this also not in terms of necessarily revenue-neutral. I think in some cases, if, when we invest in our, in our business districts in this way, you know, it could mean an increase in taxes, but we might find out that in the end, we're doing better overall with a series of measures such as this one. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
I can't remember the name, but there is a unofficial committee that's associated with our Health Department that has chimed in on other public health issues, and I would like them to provide some feedback on this.
Will the clerk please take the roll on the motion to send this back to ANPW, where doubtless there will be an extraordinarily robust discussion at some point.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 4-0-25 is re-referred to the Committee on Administration and Public Works. Now, on item A12, Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A12, which is ordinance 1025, the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, amending city code section 422, which is the Building Energy and Water Use Benchmarking section of code, to incorporate building performance standards and creating section 221.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of ordinance 1-0-25. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Councilmember, Councilmember Burns?
First off, quickly, want to publicly apologize to Councilmember Reed for interjecting during his time at the last meeting. I've done that before to my colleague to the left, and when they, you know, I think Mayor Biss subjected, Councilmember Saffronin objected, and I yielded. I did not yield when it came to Councilmember Reed, so I apologize. I do think what would help is, because this happened even today, you know, the, sometimes when people do the point of order, point of information, one, it's neither of any of those things, and it's just an opportunity for them to insert something into the conversation, as I was trying to do. And so, I, and I would just, I think we all need to make sure we're being acknowledged by the mayor before that happens, and I think that is probably the best way to handle this moving forward. But again, I do apologize that I interjected. It's not consistent with what I would want to happen during my time, and I'll make sure moving forward to reserve all of my input and feedback when I'm recognized by the mayor. That being said, I am, you know, I am supportive of what is in the packet this evening. I had, I was back-to-back HBO calls today, and, you know, I think the first thing I want to get across is, a lot of what I'm hearing is, are the same concerns that I heard when this was first introduced at City Council. And I know that because it inspired me to do a lot of the due diligence work that I've done since then, which I'll quickly explain. So, one, I've met with, I think, all or most of the organizations that have informed this process, so Institute for Market Transformation, Slipstream, I talked to different members of the Building Electrification Working Group, I believe that's what it's called. I've spoken to Councilmember Cambridge, Massachusetts, have, has a similar ordinance, not, not the same, they don't include residential properties in their ordinance, but similar enough, talked to their council member who made the referral there, spoke with their staff that's implementing their ordinance, spoke to Illinois Climate Bank and C-PACE to get a better understanding of the terms, the loan terms, to support these types of building improvements. Joe Freeman, who I believe is part of the Building Electrification Working Group, and also was a, worked at Grumman Buckets, was kind enough to do a walkthrough of three facilities in my ward that would be covered by this ordinance. One was First Church of God, another one was Prim Towers and Jacob Blake. To get a, to allow me and them to get a better understanding of what systems they have, what the replacement opportunities may be, and then, you know, a bit of better understanding of how that, this might impact them. And so, I guess what I'm, what I'm really trying to point out is that my support today is not done kind of loosely. I probably have done more research on, on this issue more than most people, and, and so, it comes with a really kind of solid understanding of what the potential unintended consequences can be. Not all born out of my, you know, out of my own mind, I've listened, right? I've met with the building owners several times and, and the other stakeholders that I've mentioned. And I think the main thing, I just want everybody to understand, because I don't think this is being acknowledged in the comments, is that, and we've made this clear, one of my amendments makes it clear that this is not enforceable until after the rules are adopted by council. And so, regardless of how you feel, there's been a lot of feelings shared, and I, and again, those feelings inspired me to do the work that I've done and to make the amendments I've made, but setting that aside for a moment, this is not enforceable until we approve the rules, so there'll be another opportunity for, for folks to oppose this, right? And I think what I'm still hearing is, is people are kind of assuming the worst. They're, they're jumping way ahead of the process and assuming that this is going to be applied in the most destructive and disruptive way possible. And, and I don't think that's, that's fair, I don't think our lenders, I think they're smart enough once they understand what's here to not overreact in that way. I think they're going to allow the rulemaking process to happen before they determine how they're going to, you know, position themselves to this. And, and then, what's also great about these amendments is, the building owners actually get to nominate people to the technical committee, right? So, not only is this not, it's only, it's but words on a piece of paper until the rules are adopted by council, but the building owners now get to nominate people to be a part of that rulemaking process, right? And so, I don't see where the monsters are anymore under the bed, right? I understood it initially, I don't see it anymore. I think with these amendments, you know, we're where we need to be, and let's allow the rulemaking process now to, let's see what that process produces. And what I've made clear on phone calls earlier today, you know, a vote for me today on this is, is only acknowledgement that the amendments that I've asked for are here, it's not a guarantee that I'll vote on this once this comes back in a year, year and a half, et cetera. So, you know, happy to answer any, any questions about the specific amendments, but assuming this is approved, as it's been presented in our packet, I plan to vote yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you want to move to adopt the amendments?
Do I need to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So moved.
Is there a second?
I--
Councilmember Burns moves to adopt all of the amendments presented in the packet, ordinance 1-0-25. Councilmember Revel, seconds. Will the clerk please take--
Point of order, just to be clear, there were amendments that were suggested that weren't Councilmember Burns's, so I think I submitted two. Are those included in the motion?
So, your amendments are, let me pull up, so which, which two are, are you referencing, Councilmember?
The two that I shared with the council at the last meeting.
So, those, the one was about the--
Alternative compliance, I believe, I'm pulling up one. So, one was striking the use of certified carbon offsets and carbon credits, and the other one was what you sent by email clarifying the definition of who is eligible--
Those, those two.
Okay.
So, my assumption had been that that was, those were all a part of the discussions that folks have had these last two weeks, so I was assuming that they would all be adopted tonight, but I don't require that, obviously. Councilmember Burns, did you intend to move those as well?
I think that would be up to Councilmember Reed, and then, I'm sure Councilmember Nusma would react, you know, would want to react to this, but--
I'd be happy to fill in here, happy to jump in. Councilmember Reed, if you refer to the email I sent you February, I'm sorry, March 6th, 11:28 a.m., there were two amendments you had contemplated at our last meeting. One was language regarding alternative compliance pathways, and you had suggested removing certified carbon credits and verified carbon credits from explicitly being referenced. In discussions with staff and stakeholders and, and Councilmember Burns, we acknowledged that that language was added in at the request of Northwestern University, and taking it in, or, keeping it in or leaving it out has no net effect because they were mentioned as possibilities, not requirements. So, at the moment, the amended language that Councilmember Burns has, has motioned on this evening does not include that amendment. Councilmember Reed, your second amendment was related to tenant cost pass-throughs, and you suggested several paragraphs of, of language that would require building owners to explain if they were using the Healthy Buildings Ordinance as an excuse to raise rents. Discussion on this item with the group and with staff allowed us to realize that if such an ordinance, or such an amendment were adopted, this would be allowing builder, building owners to blame any rent increase whatsoever on the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. We didn't feel that was appropriate. Council, Mr. Mayor, you're looking at me funny.
I'm just, my understanding, and I'm looking back, because I, but I just haven't read it since the weekend, but my understanding is that neither of those amendments are in the packet.
Neither of them is in the packet. If that's simple answer, neither of them is in the packet, I'm giving a little bit of background as to why.
Got it, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
But the one amendment that is in response to Councilmember Reed's concerns, that is in the packet, is the one that clarifies that the, just being, for instance, a nonprofit doesn't automatically qualify you as an equity-prioritized building. It clarifies instead that the, I think the technical committee, or perhaps the Healthy Buildings-- Yeah, so the Healthy Buildings Accountability Board must specifically designate a building as an equity-prioritized building, you don't automatically just wind up in the pool by virtue of being a nonprofit. So, that, that is the one amendment, I think, that is in the packet, that's a response to a question of Councilmember Reed, rather than some of the requests that Councilmember Burns had had. And so, that's the one part that, I guess, there's, we need to be clear, is that part of your motion, Councilmember Burns? That, that sort of a technical clarification to make sure--
I believe that is in the--
That's in the packet, right.
That's a question for staff.
No, I'm looking at it, it's in the packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, can you clarify again, what is--
So, this is, this is a thing that resulted in a bit of a back-and-forth last time. So, equity priorities, prioritized buildings get some extra consideration, and Councilmember Reed was concerned that the language that we had before said, "Any nonprofit is automatically an equity-prioritized building," when obviously, that doesn't make any sense as a thing that we would want. And so, what I, what we went back and did, since he raised that concern, was make the language much clearer, that you don't just automatically become an equity-prioritized building because you happen to be a nonprofit, or a religious institution, or affordable housing. Instead, they have to be specifically designated as such. So, we're not going to be in a situation where, like, all of a sudden, Northwestern, the wealthiest institution in town, gets lots of extra special dispensation because of a drafting error. So, it fixes that potential drafting error.
To Councilmember Nusma, I think that is, that's in the--
That's in there.
That's in the packet. Yeah, so I'm moving everything.
Yeah.
I think it was, everything was, all the changes were highlighted.
Right. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that was one of the amendments that was highlighted.
Okay, so I think we're all on the same page now. The motion from Councilmember Burns, that was seconded by Councilmember Revel, is to adopt all of the amendments that are in the packet. And now that we have clarity on that, I would ask for a vote on the motion to amend ordinance 1-0-25, and then we'll resume discussion after that, after that vote.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffronin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Not here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and ordinance 1-0-25 is now amended. Now, the next speaker is our Councilmember Reed, followed by Nusma.
Thank you. So, I still think it's critical to have the amendment regarding tenant cost pass-throughs. Again, I don't, this doesn't give the green light to housing providers to pass through costs. It says, hey, if you are raising rents because of this, which many of them have said they're going to have to do as a result of this, well, then you have to let the city know, so the city and the, and the, the various committees that are going to be overseeing this have data to show how this is impacting affordability. Without a requirement to have the housing provider share this data with us, we're not going to, we'll have no metric to know what the impact on affordability has been, and thereby, we're just, we're leaving out critical data that would help us form this, the criteria in this ordinance much better. I'll also say that with the EPBs-- And thereby, we're just, we're leaving out critical data that would help us uh, form this um, uh, the the criteria in this ordinance much better. Um, I'll I'll also say that with the EPBs, uh, the amendment that we may, that was just adopted, uh, does not uh, address my concern. Uh, because it still leaves, it still leaves room for there to be a legal challenge on an equity basis. Because if we say that, for example, if the um, the, what is the committee called? I'm blanking today.
Community.
Not the technical committee.
Healthy Buildings Advisory Board.
Yeah, the HBAB, that's what it was or something. Yeah. Um, if if that committee chooses, let's say, for example, to designate one large nonprofit institution, let's say, uh, you know, Ascension or St. Francis in My Ward as an EPB, but then chooses not to designate Northwestern. Well, then what is the criteria that they're using to choose one nonprofit over another? And without that criteria being laid out in an ordinance, uh, there could be a cause for uh, a legal challenge based on um, an equity concern. I'll uh, I'll I'll throw out a few other things. I'm ultimately going to vote yes on this today, um, because I think that um, that this ordinance is undone, um, and it's an aspirational ordinance as it is presented. And it truly is, as councilmember uh, uh, councilmember Newsma has said in the past, that it's planting the flag. It it is planting a flag, but it's not doing much else than that uh, in its current state. Um, and so my concerns with this ordinance, um, that will hopefully be solved in the next year or so are that, uh, you know, the ordinance as currently drafted, uh, does not meet uh, constitutional requirements of uh, lacking vagueness. And it it lacks proper notice uh, under this ordinance. Folks can refer to uh, Supreme Court cases like Chicago v. Morales, which was certainly, it was a criminal case regarding loitering. But the Supreme Court found that um, that the uh, the language there was, you know, so vague and ambiguous and gave insufficient notice to people as to be unconstitutional. And I think this ordinance uh, follows suit. Similarly, in that same case, uh, you know, it left far too much discretion and arbitrary enforcement up to, uh, in that case, it was uh, law enforcement officers. In this case, it is our city manager, um, because there there are no minimal guidelines uh, to to govern uh, some of the city manager's decisions. Not this particular city manager, but the position in itself, uh, you know, moving forward regarding um, how this ordinance will be ultimately enforced. And so it lacks firm guidelines, uh, which similarly was an argument for the Morales case to be uh, knocked down. Also separately, there's a case, uh, the uh, Coats v. City of Cincinnati, a federal case, um, which also looked at the vagueness doctrine. Um, you know, it's subjective criteria and unpredictable compliance. Um, in that uh, law, the uh, concern was that the way the Cincinnati ordinance was written, it said, you know, it's illegal for folks to assemble in a manner that could be annoying to a passerby. Um, the term annoying was inherently subjective, um, you know, conduct that one person might find uh, to be annoying or might not annoy another. And so uh, the way the HBO, I think, um, violates that principle is, um, you know, the alternative compliance pathway plan. The HBO allows a building owner to propose an alternative compliance plan. If the owner believes the property cannot reasonably uh, meet uh, its interim or final performance standards. I'll close here in thirty seconds and will not ask to speak a second time. Um, and so uh, I'll I'll send some of this over. We're going to pass it tonight. Uh, and the last thing I'll say is, um, it could be void for vagueness, uh, you know, the undefined standards, standards that are listed here and due process risk. Um, were also highlighted in those two cases. There are more examples. And I and I fear that, um, you know, in between the time that we adopt those uh, standards uh, that are going to be set forth by the technical committee and other committees, that we could be setting ourselves up for um, unnecessary legal challenges. Uh, and I hope that if we do receive those legal challenges, that uh, we don't spend too much taxpayer money trying to defend an ordinance that just at face value, at its current uh, standard, would likely um, would would likely not withstand muster. And I'll and I'll say that, last thing, is that it is a very big difference, uh, that the Cambridge ordinance and some of the ordinances in other communities um, did not include residential uh, properties. And so, uh, you know, it's not just Cambridge, it was other communities. And I think that's a key difference uh, with affordability long-term here in Evanston. But with that, I will be voting yes today, um, and I encourage folks to participate in the process that happens over the next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think we're almost there. Uh, this particular journey started a more than a year ago, uh, when council approved the CARP action plan for 2024. And on that uh, action plan, I think it was the second or third bullet point was the development of a building performance standards ordinance. That's what we are finalizing hopefully tonight. So uh, I just want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved in this process, starting with staff, Kara and your team. We could not have done this uh, without you. Uh, I want to thank the community members who have participated in the building electrification working group, who carried a lot of water on this. And you did dozens of open meetings and community engagement, uh, you know, starting a year ago through the fall when this became more of a live issue and got on the radar screen of folks who maybe should have been paying attention earlier, but now they're uh, in the room. And uh, we have had robust engagement over the last uh, over the last two months since this was introduced at council. And you know, this engagement is um, what this ordinance is all about. You know, there is still a monster under the bed, uh, councilmember Burns. That monster is climate change, and we are not going to kill that monster uh, if we do nothing. Uh, so this ordinance is the community of Evanston standing up and saying, we are going to do something about climate change in alignment with what this council and previous councils have said is a priority of this community. Uh, but we're acknowledging, we can't do this alone. We can't have Kara and her staff come up with some numbers and, you know, folks on the council kind of harumph a little bit and say, yeah, these numbers look good. Uh, without engaging the folks who are going to be impacted by this ordinance. Uh, and those folks uh, will be represented in the rulemaking process, as has been the intent all along. I think with the uh, amended language in front of us, it is, you know, abundantly and explicitly clear uh, that those impacted stakeholders will have a voice in writing these rules. Um, and that was what we intended, and we cannot do this work without the uh, that representation. And if we thought getting to this point was hard, well, let's take a break, uh, take a breath and have a good night's sleep. Because the real work is going to start tomorrow when we form these groups and, you know, really dig into the rulemaking process. It is incredibly important uh, that we get that right and we do a good job to do justice to this issue and all the stakeholders in Evanston that are uh, affected by this. So um, yeah, thank you to everyone that's been involved. Thank you to my colleagues on the council for weighing in. And I think we are uh, going to be approving an ordinance tonight that is markedly better than what was introduced to council in January. So I am looking forward to approving this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Revel.
Thank you. Um, so I did have a, and thank you, Jonathan Newsma, for introductions. I did have a really nice meeting with Quentin Zander Van here in DC. Spent a long time with him. And, you know, it is very different to people's points here, their their ordinance. They also, um, it was a long process. It started way back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, when they first passed an ordinance, um, a um, an ordinance that, some of the notes here. Um, an ordinance for an energy use disclosure ordinance, as well as an energy emissions ordinance, disclosure ordinance. And and that is where they would, you know, provide uh, disclosure on the website of all the energy uses of all the buildings and assessing them. This was a big project that happened first and.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If councilmember Kelly is referring to what in Evanston we call the uh, benchmarking ordinance, the energy uh, use and
and energy and water use benchmarking ordinance, which we passed here, I believe in two thousand sixteen.
The energy emissions?
Yes, we've been tracking uh, emissions uh, and energy use at the same buildings which the HBO would apply to uh, since two thousand sixteen.
Her building. Thank you. So my concern is, they had, you know, several committees that worked for many, many years prior there and would actually, you know, assess these, assess each building individually. And I don't, I I don't believe we're doing that. Jonathan?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
So so there there are maps of all the buildings and where the, in terms of um, energy use and the the changes over years and setting benchmarks in terms of which each building has, how they've either reduced their use or increased use?
I think uh, Kara Pratt is available to answer your question, councilmember.
Yes, Kara Pratt, city's sustainability and resilience manager. The city's energy and water benchmarking ordinance, which was passed in two thousand sixteen, has all of our data publicly disclosed on the proposed Healthy Buildings Ordinance webpage. And so you can go through all the data that's been disclosed and the compliance rates for the covered properties, which are the same covered properties that are subject to the Healthy Buildings Ordinance. In terms of the term benchmarking, they are required to report on electricity, natural gas, emissions, water usage, as well as several other measures through the Energy Star Portfolio Manager System. And so they don't set benchmarks for themselves. It's just a disclosure ordinance.
On both energy use and emissions? Because I looked for this. I went through it. I didn't see them sidelined. I mean, I didn't see the, all the buildings listed in this way, but I I trust you. I'll go again if you could share that with me. Because I did go through our, the ordinance to see what I could find, and I didn't see the same. Well, I didn't see what he showed me from Cambridge, um, on our website.
Yes, there is some information on the benchmarking website. Mostly, this was submitted through the Open Data Portal in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen. And then as the city has moved away from that portal temporarily, now the city's information on this lives on the benchmarking and Healthy Buildings Ordinance webpages.
Okay, I will look through that, and maybe that's why, because it was moved. Um, okay, thank you. So what I did here, though, was that there were these committees that were formed that worked for many years on many different um, aspects, including that. Um, and, you know, setting, setting even the the uh, the fees for non-compliance for, you know, tons of emissions. Uh, and so they they worked a lot of this out ahead of time. Um, and so I am, I guess I'm concerned that this feels a little bit like envision Evanston in that we're jumping to the end. Um, you know, like we were jumping to zoning and then trying to kind of backpedal and correct. And I am also concerned about the impacts, again, on rentals. Yes, there's only covers um, commercial buildings of a hundred thousand square feet or more. Um, and so, you know, I I don't think these are the same. And I think I do feel like there is this rush to be the first, to say, we're going to be the first in Illinois, when I think this is actually deterring from the hard work now of making impacts now on our environment, setting this sort of like, as Devon said, this, you know, planting this the stake for this flag for twenty fifty. Um, I think there's so much more we should be doing immediately to impact the air quality. I love the Green Homes program that um, Kara worked on. And I think we should be, you know, doubling down on that and improving that. Um, also locating funds that the feds allocated for that program. I think I'm the only person really asking about that. Um, we did get money allocated for Green Homes programs to make healthier homes and environmentally healthier, um, for low-income households. And um, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars from the feds for that is, has not shown up yet. Um, and so, you know, I feel like this has really been more about that, shooting for this twenty fifty mark, trying to correct it over and over again, instead of doubling down right now on where do we want to be in five years in terms of, you know, um, impacting the air and working on that right now. And I I feel like this has been, in fact, a deterrent uh, to moving more quickly on improving air quality now. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel.
Um, well, I'd like to go back to councilmember Newsma's um, expressions of appreciation that we're at this point of actually finally adopting the Healthy Building Ordinance. Um, it, for decades, scientists have been warning about the dangers of increasing levels of CO2 in the atmosphere caused by the burning of fossil fuels. And they have called with increasing urgency for a swift transition away from the use of fossil fuels. My father-in-law, Roger Revel, was among them. He was known as the grandfather of the greenhouse effect, and he testified several times before Congress. In nineteen eighty, twenty years after his first testimony to Congress, he said, I can't emphasize too strongly that decisive action must be taken in the next two or three decades if profound climate changes fifty to seventy years into the future are to be avoided. Climate changes that we are now experiencing. If we had paid attention to scientists like my father-in-law, if we had emulated rather than ridiculed President Carter, who had hot water solar panels installed on the White House in nineteen seventy nine, think where we would be today. We would have a more robust renewable energy industry, greater advances in energy-efficient technologies, stronger energy efficiency building codes, and energy prices that favored renewable energy rather than oil and gas, all of which would have encouraged building managers to invest in energy efficient, efficient systems years ago. So to go back to our uh, healthy, our benchmarking ordinance, in two thousand sixteen, here in Evanston, we passed a benchmarking ordinance that requires managers of our larger buildings to track and report their building's energy and water usage. They report this information annually using an online tool created by the US EPA. Building managers can then compare the performance of their buildings with similar buildings and identify areas for improvement. The hope back in two thousand sixteen was that this information would prompt building managers to invest in making energy efficiency improvements to their buildings. But with Evanston's largest buildings still responsible for about half of Evanston's greenhouse gas emissions, it's clear that the benchmarking ordinance has not been enough. We need to take the next step and set building performance standards for these buildings. And the Healthy Building Ordinance will provide the incentive that building managers need to act. It will ensure that building managers actually sit down now and make a plan, that they figure out now what it will take to meet the HBO's building performance standards by two thousand fifty. It's understandable that many property managers have questions and concerns about their ability to comply with the HBO. But it's important to note that the ordinance has a twenty-five-year timeline. It's difficult for us in two thousand twenty-five to imagine the new technologies that will become available in the years ahead, technologies that will help buildings achieve the required building performance standard. But these new tech, new technologies will come. Concerns about costs are certainly understandable. Fortunately, a variety of financial options are available, and Evanston has experienced nonprofit partners who can help building managers identify those funding opportunities. And energy efficiency projects will help lower energy bills for tenants and for building owners. However, if building managers determine that they cannot reasonably meet the interim or final performance standards due to technical difficulties or financial hardship, they can submit an alternative compliance pathway plan, which will not unnecessarily be denied. We must not back away from our commitment to achieving the urgent goals that we set in our climate action and resilience plan. The climate crisis demands it. At a previous council meeting, councilmember Burns asked who would benefit from our implementing the HBO. The answer are the students that we have seen at many of our council meetings, speaking eloquently about the need for our HBO, and basically the children growing up in our community today, who deserve a future with cleaner air and, most of all, a livable climate. It's time to join the growing number of other jurisdictions across the country that have implemented building performance standards and encourage other municipalities here in Illinois to follow our lead. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time. Uh, also, no one whose time has not expired is requesting to speak, so councilmember Burns, if you could be very quick.
Yeah, one, I I I'd like to.
Yeah, one, I, I'd like to check to the videotape on that, like, like in, like in the NFL, because I, I don't think, I know I didn't say that in terms of who would benefit. I know exactly what benefit. What I brought up, I think, and it might have been somebody else, what I brought up was the people who will be most impacted by this, by far, are building owners, and I wanted to make sure they're represented. The, um, the funding is really important, so I forgot that piece. It, it's not clear if we're going to receive the 10.4, when we're going to receive it. I'm less concerned about the funding for the 100 building assessments, because I think we have time for that. Obviously, we got to go through the rulemaking process before, we would need the funds for that. But specifically for the stipends and the staff or technical support, I think we need that sooner than later. And so do we have available sustainability funds that we can use for now to do those two things?
Thank you for the question. Staff does share the concern about stipend-supported community groups, as we know that the efforts related to implementing the rulemaking process are intense. And we are confident that the sustainability fund does have an appropriate budget to conduct rulemaking for the first year, because we do have an outreach line item. So we are confident that we can provide those stipends, as was originally contemplated with the Department of Energy grant.
Perfect, thank you. And then the last thing, I just want to emphasize again, because there was a lot said, and I just want to be clear, no rules, no ordinance. And so anybody that increases rents because of this, it's not because of this, it's because they just, they decided to do that on their own, because it's very clear, especially now, that, that this is but words on the paper until the rules are adopted by council. And now with these amendments, the, the, the building owners, and I want to be a little bit more specific about that, they will have the ability to nominate three members. The mayor will nominate three members, no veto power, which is going to encourage consensus building, you know, is going to encourage folks to work together to find common ground. And so I just, I want everybody in the public to understand that, that most of what you're still hearing about this is just people fearing the worst. And, but there's nothing in this ordinance that would indicate that we're going to do the things that, that this process is going to produce, the things that people fear the most. And even more so now, the folks that are concerned about it literally have a meaningful seat at the table, is a unprecedented move by a city to allow outside kind of associations to nominate members to an official city committee that the council will confirm. So this is, these are meaningful amendments, and, uh, and that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris is not here. Councilmember Kelly? Sorry, could you?
We couldn't hear that vote. Councilmember Kelly?
I voted no.
Councilmember Harris? She's still on. Hi, could you repeat that, Councilmember Harris?
Is she there?
She's there.
Councilmember Harris, are you available to vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries. An ordinance 1-0-25 is passed as amended. Now on item 813, councilmember Newsma.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 20025, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease with Celadon Construction Corporation for 2603 Sheridan Road, famously known as the Harley Clark Mansion.
Seconds.
Councilmember Newsma moves, uh, passage, adoption of ordinance 20-0-25. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, councilmember Revel.
Um, I just, I want to make sure everybody did notice there's an amendment made to the lease since our last meeting regarding the use of the fire circle. And basically, it calls for a review of that use after three years' time. And so adjustments can be made with the agreement of both parties. And, um, and I think that the ordinance is, the lease is pretty clear about access, that the public is going to have access for the same hour, to the grounds, the same hours as our, all of our parks are open. And our Parks and Rec Department is going to be able to have the programming that they're used to having in the area. So I, I'm, I'm very reassured about that portion of the lease.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Reed.
Um, thank you. So with the fire pits, then, I think, when I, I met several times with the Parks and Rec Department staff, so is it, if I understand, it's supposed to be, so it's spread out equally, so that it's 25% of each month? Is that right?
Of each week, of each weekend, I believe it says. No.
25, I'm sorry. Let me, um...
Good evening, members of the city council. This is Audrey Thompson, Director of Parks Recreation. So yes, there's 25% of the total use for Parks and Rec, 25% for Celadon, and then 50% for the community. And then there's also a clause that says 25% for each Celadon in the city. There will not be over 25% of prime time, which is the weekend. So, and weekend, as, as is defined, is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thank you. I think, um, I still on? I, um, the concern was during, like, throughout the, so it'd be 25%?
Yes, so the, I'm sorry.
How, so that months that are high use, it couldn't be used, like, you know, an entire, like, even if it's weekdays, but most of, like, July and August, for their 25%?
Right, so it's 25% of prime time, which is more of the weekend. And so that would be any month, whether that was the prime times of July, August, and September, it would be any month. We would not be able to, Celadon would not be able to use it more than 25% of weekend. We would not be able to use it more than 25%, but the community would get 50% of prime time as well.
Okay, and prime time is?
Defined as the weekend. Mm-hmm.
But not certain months of the year? Because it's open right from, uh, what is it, from April through October?
Mm-hmm, correct.
All year, I guess, I guess my point is, like, it's, it's open year-round?
So, so no. So it would be open from April until October? And so there are months where we get more use, but the 25% stands for any month. And so we want to make sure that the prime time is more of the weekend, and so that's any month. So that would include those times that we have high usage, which would be July, June, July, August, those, um, those summer times before school goes back.
Okay. I guess I feel like it would be better if it were 25% of months, so that we don't see prime time months. I know that weekends are prime time, and I appreciate that. Thank you, I do appreciate that, you know, the weekend, but I also think we have prime time, like, summertime, where we could end up seeing much of the, that. There are 25% being used during the highest peak months.
So the 25% would still be for those months outside of the weekend. So, um, it would still hold true for the entire month, including the weekends, but we specified the weekends, because I did hear a few of you all with, you know, well, what if, you know, Celadon uses all of their time and just books all the weekends? And so we, we did hear that, and that's why we added the clause for the weekends, but the 25% holds true for the entire month. So 25, 25, and 50. So of course, the public use has more than Parks and Rec and Celadon, because we want to, we feel like it's really important for the community to also have the time that they need with the fire circle.
So, okay, thank you. So the 25, so it's 25% of time during a month also?
Yes.
It's still 25% total, but it just, that's only with, just so I understand, like, could somebody, you, could Celadon say, you know, use it multiple days during a month, during, like, the months of July and August, avoiding weekends, and use up their 25% of their total time during peak months? Or no?
Up to 25% for the total time, and then weekends. So that, that's the way it's written currently.
I mean, do, am I making sense? I mean, I just wouldn't want to see, you know, much of our prime months where folks would like to be down there, minus the weekends, but being used up, because Celadon is using its 25% during, you know, most of the months of July and August.
So councilmember Kelly, Alex Rugge, I think I can account for this. When we reviewed this with Parks and Rec, we identified that the majority of the usage is during the weekends, including in the prime time months. So it's still the weekend that is the most desirable time. So when we were looking at everything with Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Department said that the weekends throughout the entire year are prime time and the most usage that the fire ring gets. So to preserve the prime time during the whole season of the fire ring, we, we really highlighted the weekends. The fire ring doesn't get as much usage during the week, even in those prime time months. So it was far less of a concern for the Parks and Rec Department.
Okay, thank you. So that's the prime time, though? So they have 25% of prime time, correct?
Yes, 25% of prime time, which means the weekends.
Which means weekends, which means they could use weekends all during just this, the best summer months. Just to be clear, because if you take all the weekends from April to October, you could, you know, and they were to use the week, I mean, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we have this, you know, really special place for Evanstonians, open during the months when they would be most likely to want to use, access the fire pit.
Yeah, and I think that's why we also included the provision where this would be revisited in three years. And we really specified three years, because it's going to take a while for Celadon to complete the construction open. And then it, it's really just one fire ring season that will see Celadon and Harley Clark fully open. And so after that one season, we'll be revisit this and work together to amend it as needed for either party or for the public.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess I would rather see it spread out, you know, the prime times would spread out over the months, because I am concerned that we are going to see the weekends getting used during the prime months, and our residents won't have access. So, and they'll use their quarter, their 25% on those weekends, you know, the best time to be out there. So that's my concern. And then with regard to the tents, did we get that, so has that been changed? It just said the tents will be moved after the event, does it say within now, I'm sorry, a certain number of hours, that the tents will come down after an event?
There's nothing about the tents that are, that's specified in the lease.
Well, it says they'll be, they'll be dismantled after the, because they take up the front, like, if they were to take the front lawn, or rather, the back lawn. It says, it does say in the lease that they will be removed after an event.
Correct, it's not further specified.
Okay, so I would ask, because after could mean a delay, it could mean they, they're up for the weekend, you know, they just don't get around to taking them down, and then that makes part of the, um, part of the park area off limits if they leave. I think it should say within 24 hours, they'll be... So this is something I did talk about over the week with staff. So I'd like to amend it to say within 24 hours of an event, the tents would be taken down?
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay. And then I also have a regard, question regarding the public spaces. I'm not really clear what, what those are in terms of access to the building. That's not really specific, doesn't really explain specifically what access that is. And I don't think that's changed either, so I do have concerns about that. Of course, I love, you know, I just want to preface this with, you know, I'm very excited about preserving the building, the preservation that would happen with this, and of course, the Jensen, I love that they'll be supported, I just want to be really clear on that. But I also, this is the time we want to get the lease right. So I am concerned about the public spaces. Public access is the most important thing. The referendum, which wasn't that long ago, people want access, and that's not really clear. It just says entering, we don't know if that means what rooms, or how much, or what that will mean. Also, what happens if, for example, they fail to raise?
Just a heads up, you may not, councilmember, you may not have heard, because you're not in the room, your time is up, so I want to ask you to be very quick. Thank you.
Okay. So can, can, what happens, like, we don't have any provisions, what are the off-ramps here? Like, if, if the funds aren't raised, where, where are those?
Absolutely. So there's a default provision in the lease. One of the default provisions is if construction begins or construction doesn't start, and the property is left standing for 30 days with no activity, then the city can begin the termination of the lease.
After 30 days?
Correct. And the?
And do we ask?
The tenant has the ability to cure. So if they are able to cure that within 30 days, then we would not have the right to terminate the lease.
Okay. And then we ask for, I know with the last lease, we ask for regular updates of funding. Are we asking for that now?
Uh, we are not.
We aren't? And why was that decision?
As part of the RFP proposal, the funding was laid out, it was not, I, I think the last lease was highly dependent on donations. This is being privately funded.
Um, okay, and then, let's see, there's tents?
All right, councilmember, I'm gonna...
Okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, unless, unless there's a request that I had not enforced time, I think, given the late hour, I'm going to enforce the time limits at this point. So we move on with councilmember Reed, followed by Sufferton, and then Newsma.
I withdraw my comments.
Councilmember Suff...
Other than to say that I've had conversations with staff since our last meeting that addressed any lingering, lingering concerns I had. And so I appreciate staff reaching out, particularly Director Thompson and Manager Stowe. And so looking forward to seeing this project come to fruition.
Councilmember Sufferton, followed by Newsma.
Thank you, I would be very quick. Audrey and Chi Pop are both here, and so I want to take advantage of that opportunity. Could we explore the possibility of creating another place in Evanston where people can gather in a circle around a fire to absorb the excess capacity of people who wish to do so, that may be shut out of the Harley Clark Fire Ring as a result of this arrangement?
Second.
Absolutely. After our SORs event with downtown Evanston this Saturday, I think people like that.
My understanding is that human beings enjoy being around a fire together.
Sure.
And a circle allows them all to be in proximity to the fire. So if we could find something, and Chi Pop, obviously, with your expertise, a safe location. Thank you.
Sure.
I was going to suggest the exact same thing. I've been to the fire circle there five or six times, every time with kids who had three things on their mind, marshmallows, chocolate, and graham crackers. They didn't seem to be particularly attracted to the architecture, or even aware of the historic nature of the landscaping. So I think the simplest solution here is just put another fire ring somewhere else, and let's not do that with, you know, a super-intensive fire ring engagement committee and a high-priced fire ring consultant. Let's just build it and get it done with.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
I, I had two questions. May I ask two questions?
No.
The, the, your time was expired, and we're halfway through a roll call.
Okay, all right, now.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
No.
Uh, councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns is not here.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries. An ordinance 20-0-25 is adopted. Now on call of the wards, councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Uh, council... Uh, Councilmember Haraigaris?
Notes here. March 17th at the Prieto Community Center, we'll have a ninth ward meeting. We will have representatives from the Main Street Fair. The folks that are organizing are going to give a presentation and get feedback from community members. I'll also have community partners for affordable housing, SEPA there, as well as representatives from the high school and the geometry and construction class. And we'll be talking about the exciting new project in the ninth ward. So hope to see everyone there.
Councilmember Kelly?
Virtual council, first ward meeting this Thursday at 7:00. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Harris?
Second ward, virtual council meeting tomorrow, depending on my health. That's it.
Councilmember Winn?
No report.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Uh, Nusma, sorry.
Uh, ward meeting, fourth ward meeting is-
Sorry, mic on. Fourth ward meeting is going to be Tuesday, April 8th, pushing it back a week, because Election Day is the first, 7:00 p.m. at Robert Crown, in office hours as scheduled Saturday, the 12th, at Berry Pike.
Seeing nothing further to come before us, the March 10th meeting of the Evanston City Council stands adjourned.